Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Yes, Mr. Bureau Patel.
Here.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider. Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel. Mr. Lugo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act nineteen seventy-three, C two thirty-one sunshine law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. At this point, we'll adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA ten four twelve, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to privileged session for the purpose of discussing the following: confidential, personal, and board matters, and student matters. Can I have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Mr. Brodeur, there's also attorney-client privilege on several litigation matters.
All right, so we'll add that to the agenda for closed session.
Motion.
Motion, second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Romano, first, Mr. Vishal Patel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, right. We'll adjourn to privileged session and come back when we are ready. Thank you.
About, will be about twenty, twenty-five minutes, maybe, a little less.
Probably, maybe, a little more.
Depends on the. Yeah, and then we have two public hearings we have to announce. We have two public hearings. We'll hold the hearings when we come out of exact.
Right, call to order. At this point, we'll reconvene to open session. Motion to reconvene.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. The first thing we have today is we'll do a public hearing for John Marshall ground lease as advertised, and we'll have DMR Architects here who will present the whole project plan and provide some more details on it before we move forward with the public hearing. DMR, the floor is all yours.
Can you hear me? Perfect. Good evening. My name is Pradeep Kapoor. I'm president and CEO of DMR Architects, and we are here to present the project status of the John Marshall School. So I'm just gonna boot up my computer here. It went in sleep mode. So we've been working on the design of the project for last few months. We submitted it to DOE, and last week we received a couple of comments from DOE, very basic, and we responded to it right away. And now we are pretty much complete with the construction document. I'm gonna call Kurt Verhylek. He's a partner and also the main designer for this project, and Kurt will present overall schematics and renderings, and then I'll talk about the budget and the schedule. So over to Kurt.
Thank you, Pradeep. I'm Kurt Verhylek, Director Design, DMR Architects. So today we're presenting John Marshall additions and renovation project. Up on the screen, you can see the existing building is in tan, and the proposed additions are in the orange color, and the blue would be the renovations. So essentially, coming into the site of a Barlow, we'll be adding a new security vestibule. We'll be renovating some of the front office needs. We'll be converting the existing cafeteria into a new media center. And then the addition, which is on the top right, it's that kind of U-shaped addition, will house classrooms, new cafeteria, gymnasium, auditorium, and a new entrance for that portion of the building. Yeah, okay. So here's the first, here's the security vestibule addition. So this is at the main entrance. The orange and the yellow are the new addition portions, which are housing the security vestibule and relocated front office for better relationship and security and supervision. The blue areas are renovations for administrative office spaces, and then there will be a new media center, relocated. Here we have, this is the first floor plan, and this is showing the new connection from existing school into the new lobby space. That lobby space will lead into the new cafetorium. And then on the upper portion is the classroom wing. So at the rear of the school, there's three-story classroom wing. And that involves, includes kindergarten classrooms on the first floor. Here's the second floor. Again, the second and third floor are the same. They just stack up classrooms, staff support spaces, and bathrooms. So here's the rendering of the new front of the school. So as you approach the site, the drop-off area, we've reimagined and given the school a new identity, whereas very, very old, antiquated, and very played down. So the new entrance vestibule is within that blue entrance volume, and then we're re-cladding the front of the existing building with new windows and new cladding, and then we're adding new entrance signage that identifies the school there on the right. Here is another view of the security vestibule. Here's the new entrance, the security vestibule. So we're using some interjection, some color into the windows, and we're using blue complementing to school, school blue and yellow. This is the entrance at the new gymnasium addition. So this is the connector link to the existing school, and there'll be a new entrance which will allow the school to have activities after hours and be separated from the remainder of the school. So this entrance would be, you know, an after-hours entry when the gymnasium's being used off school hours. And this view is of the rear of the building. So that's, this is the classroom wing. So this is the three-story classroom. And on the left side, you can see the gymnasium, which is clad with translucent wall panels to allow nice diffused natural light into the space. And this rendering represents what the new main lobby will look like. So as you come in the security vestibule, there'll be, there'll be upgraded, new flooring, new trophy and display cabinets, signage. And then you can see on the right is where the main office entrance and main office spaces. And then finally, this, this is the lobby entry space at the gymnasium. So this space has, is a kind of interstitial space that has some raised seating area that can be used for a queuing and a holding area. It'd also be used for during after-hours as a sitting and waiting area right outside the, outside the gymnasium space. And that, that concludes the work that we've been working on with the floor plans and the renderings. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. So, so those additions and renovation area. So total addition, what we are adding between the classroom, the gymnasium, and the front lobby is about fifty-six-thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet. And the renovation area of the existing space, which is the office, the media center, and the admin wing, is roughly about seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five square feet. So below that, what you're seeing is the construction cost numbers, which are estimates based on the current market trends and the other projects we are working on. So we estimate this project to be about thirty million four hundred and seventy-one thousand in the pure construction cost. The building does require a new service upgrade because of the fifty-six-thousand-square-feet addition we are adding to. So that's about a million-dollar cost for that. So total construction cost of the project is estimated to be about thirty-one-point-four-seven million. And we are carrying about five percent contingency for a project like this, which is, again, standard per industry norm. We have about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for furniture, and then what you see below that is the soft costs, which is construction manager, finance, testing, third-party inspection, and commissioning. So those are the construction cost numbers. Next I have here is the project schedule. As I had mentioned, oops, as I had mentioned that we are looking to complete the construction documents this month. So our goal is to go out to bid by end of this month, get the bids back first week of December. November last week usually like, you know, gets a little slow because of Thanksgiving. So we wanna make sure we get the good bids in, and then start construction after getting the permits and the legal contract award in the month of December. So the way we are doing the project is we are breaking it down into four phases. The back addition will start, and the front renovation will start at the same time. So the phase one of the project will be a new lobby and office area, which we are targeting to complete August of twenty-twenty-five, so that it can be opened for the new school year in September twenty-twenty-five. And then the rest of the project will complete by August of twenty-twenty-six, so the entire school can open for September of twenty-twenty-six. So in, in big picture, those are the milestone schedule items. So that's all we have for this.
Sir, do you have soil samples that are going to be taken for this project?
So we did the geotechnical, and we're already designing the foundations, or designed the foundation based on the existing soil sample that was taken from the geotechnical report.
That's good. Oh, okay. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else would like to talk about, about the addition?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Toth.
Yes, we're now gonna hold, well, before I open the public hearing on the financing of this project, let me just tell you a little bit about what we're doing. So obviously, we're going to take public, have a public hearing, which is an opportunity for the public to make comment on the financing of this project. Way back when, before I got here, the board saw, this board and many other boards saw it to so fit to use some short-term financing tools in order to finance a project such as this. So the public hearing on this project will allow us to go out to bid for financing, to secure hopefully a favorable market rate, and finance this project over a period of five years, much like we did at JP Stevens. So with that being said, one thing that we don't have as of yet, because we have to, if everything passes from the public hearing, we'll be able to send our application to the state, and once they approve it, we could accept and receive bids where we'll get an interest rate and all that other stuff, probably hopefully in the month of October. So we'll know what our finance cost is for borrowing that money. But right now, this is just for your input on us taking out a loan on the Marshall Building. So that being said, I need a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public.
Second.
Motion by Rister Romano, second by Mr. Vishal Patel. Okay.
At this point, would anyone like to speak about the resolution?
About the building, Joe, about Marshall.
Not Marshall lease. About the Marshall lease, I apologize.
Right, this is, this is a public hearing specifically for the ground lease for the financing of the John Marshall addition renovation project. Is there anyone? And Mr. Shea.
Just a couple of quick questions. Any rough idea what is the current going interest rate is, and what is the annual payment for this? I know you don't have a definite answer. It goes out to bid, but you don't, any rough idea?
Yeah, I don't have a definite answer, but I would assume it's gonna be similar to that, which we did at JP.
Stop the clock, please.
I'm sorry?
Tell them to stop the clock, because I have.
Oh, oh, could.
So why don't we? They did, they did.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I want to do this.
I'm sorry.
You ask all your questions, Jerry, and then.
Okay.
Let me get my pen out.
The other thing is that, you know, I looked at the four phases. The last phase, is that the phase for multi-purpose room? It's the current.
So media center, art room, and office renovation. So that's the existing building area?
The last phase.
Yeah, that's the last phase. So, so last phase here, which is, starts from, so, I mean, the way you are looking at it is, there are two different parts which are gonna be finishing at the same time. So the main building, which is going to start in January of twenty-twenty-five, will complete in August of twenty-twenty-six. And then this part, which is a phase four, this would not start until March of twenty-twenty-six, because we are using this as a swing space. So while this main cafeteria addition is being built, the school will be using the existing media center, which is current cafeteria and the kitchen. So because we still want school to be able to function without interrupting their cafeteria and kitchen. So that will be starting in March of twenty-twenty-six and completing in August of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, that's the reason I asked the question, you know, just to, you know, make sure that we have costs. And the other thing is about the leasing. We know that right now we have about thirty million dollar cash sitting with us. That's the twenty million capital outlay and ten million from the capital reserve that's allocated to the budget this year. So we should have, you know, around thirty million dollars there. And we know the interest rate is coming down. So why we are financing on this one, instead of using the cash that we have in our hand, then we can finance maybe a little bit later for the JMI when the interest come down a little bit. So that's my question.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Sir.
Yeah, you can answer that, Joe.
So, you know, in regards to interest rates, right, I, you know, I think that the first question was, what do I foresee? I mean, I think back when we did JP was like four-point-six. I would assume we're gonna be in the neighborhood of four-eight to four-nine. I know the Fed's cutting rates, though. But, you know, interest rates are day-to-day. So, you know, interest rates change like I change my shirt. So the best path forward that, you know, we thought when we put this together was, at that time, finance this larger project, pay for JMI in full, and then perhaps look into doing a split-funded, partially funded, you know, partially-capital EHS with a small loan on that as well. So those were a couple of the options, and this one is just the best path forward. Oh, estimated payment. If I use that math, let's say at about a four-point-eight rate, I think, remember, this is not locked in, because I gotta receive bids and all that other good stuff. How it could be tiered and structured, I would anticipate six million in the first year. Then it would tier up to like six-three in the second, six-eight, and then seven, and then eight in the last year, running opposite of how JP is structured, where JP is heavier and then lighter towards the end, so that they, they don't, you know, you have a little bit more breathing room, so to speak. But hopefully rates keep coming down.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public comments on lease purchase only? What is saying that? Motion to end public comments on lease purchase?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Right, thank you. The next we have is a public hearing for our superintendent's contract. So tonight, as it was announced in the August board meeting, we will be holding our public hearing on extension of Superintendent Dr. Alderelli's employment contract in accordance with NJSA eighteen A eleven dot eleven. As you may be aware, Dr. Alderelli was appointed acting superintendent in November twenty-twenty-two, and he was appointed superintendent last year in August twenty-twenty-three. He has now completed one year of his initial contract, and it has been a great year indeed. At this year's August meeting, in an on-floor resolution brought up by Mr. Rivera, the board showed its continued unanimous support for the extension, voting in favor of a proposal to commence negotiations for a one-year extension of Dr. Alderelli's contract. By making this vote, the board's intention was to publicly and promptly start the legal process of this negotiation, showing our support and our faith that an agreement would quickly be reached, and Dr. Alderelli would continue to lead the district in one more year successfully. That vote taken in the last meeting means more of ceremonial and show of support, and does not mean that Dr. Alderelli's contract was extended in the last meeting. So that being said, now in terms of the process, we are pleased to advise that in last one month, the contract extension has been negotiated with Dr. Alderelli, and then reviewed and approved by the executive county superintendent. As I previously said, we are now in the final stages of this process, and that is what brings us to this public hearing of today, on the matter, on the matter of Dr. Alderelli's contract and the board vote on it. At this point, soon we will open up the floor for a special public comment section solely on the purposes of discussing the extension of Dr. Alderelli's contract. After everyone in the public who wishes to make a statement has been given the opportunity to make themselves heard, the hearing will then be closed, and later, during the course of regular public meeting, the board will vote on the resolution to approve or reject the proposed contract extension. Now, everyone knows that I call him a rock star, so if anyone wants to play the Brooks-Prankston music in the public comments, they can feel free to do so, and we all will welcome and enjoy that show over here. I know that happened in the council meeting, but especially this may be a right time to do that if someone is prepared for that. We will be happy to have some entertainment on that today. I know myself and other board members here, we are looking forward to the hearing and considering your comments. I will now ask for a motion to open the public hearing on extension of Superintendent Dr. Alderelli's contract.
I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Romano, Mr. Rivera, right? Let's open the public hearing. Any public comments? Right, Mr. Lakhankar.
Thank you for the opportunity. My question to Dr. Alderelli is that, of course, we are looking forward around the future.
Your name and address.
My name is Taryendra Lakhankar, one ninety-two Evergreen Road, Edison, New Jersey, zero-eighty-three-seven.
Right, you're recognized.
Thank you. My question that we have requirement in future job market of fifty percent STEM jobs, fifty percent STEM jobs. Edison School District providing a priority to only three-point-five percent STEM-related educations.
So this is not to interview the superintendent?
No, I'm, I'm interviewing, I'm asking his vision. I'm just giving background first, then I'll begin. So I would give what his vision.
But specifically on the contract, if, uh. Okay, perfect, awesome. If the attorney says so, that's, you're perfectly.
Okay, so perfect. To my. Pause it, just for, sir, just for everyone's edification. This is a public hearing. You have your six minutes. It's not necessarily a question-and-answer period. The board's president may make that discretionary move to answer or not answer. However, if it's not, if your comments are not related specifically to the, I understand his background, but if it's not, winds up not being specifically related, we're gonna ask you to sit down.
Okay.
Just you and everybody else.
Sure.
It has to wind up being related to the superintendent's contract. Thank you, sir.
So if you're reading her's contract, we need to know what is the vision for this community. Okay, right? I would like to, what is his vision for the future of Edison School District? When we're looking forward for fifty percent requirement job market for STEM, what he's thinking of? If he's not, he has great vision for this, of course you should go ahead and contact. But if he doesn't provide any vision for future of the township's kids, what he gonna do? So I'm looking forward to that vision, because we are only three percent STEM education students, getting, three percent students only getting the STEM-related educations. So what he thinking in future for Edison School District and their future of STEM career? Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, you know, yeah, Dr. Alderelli would like to answer. Okay, we'll let the comments finish, and Dr. Alderelli would like to say a few words after that. Anyone else for public comments for extension of superintendent's contract? Jerry?
Jerry, Jerry Shea, Edison. I forgot to tell my name before, sorry. We all love Dr. Alderelli. We know he's doing a good job. But how this thing was brought up is illegal. And for someone who is in the educational field to bring this thing up on the floor, it's beyond me. You need to go learn, learn the basic trainings. It's dangerous to not even know the policy of how to extend superintendent's contract. That's the most important decision for a board member is to vote on a superintendent's contract. You know, you know, Mr. Rivera was the only one who voted no on his contract, who abstained on the contract when we were hiring him. And now, because he's very popular, so he tried to redeem himself by bringing this thing on the floor, which is illegal. So, you know, yes, so Dr. Alderelli, take advantage of it, get it. But I just wanna say the process is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments for superintendent's contract extension? I don't see any hands raised. Last call. All right, motion to end public comments for superintendent's contract extension.
Motion.
Mr. Romano, Mr. Vishal Patel, all in favor?
Aye.
Right, the public comment signs here for superintendent's contract extension.
Mr. President, I have a question. Board attorney, was there anything illegal of what was done?
No, the process was, there's a five-step process. There has to be notice, which was hap, happened last meeting. There has to be notification of a hearing that happened last meeting. There has to be approval by the county superintendent, executive county superintendent. That occurred. There has to be a public hearing on the rescission of a non-expired superintendent's contract. That's now, and then fifth is voting. Those are the steps.
And I appreciate that I'm popular, but I also want to discuss, I did vote yes to hire Dr. Alderelli. I voted no based on, I abstained from the terms of his contract. I won't divulge what was discussed, because it would put people in a funny circumstance. I'll respect that. But I do say, I do not agree, I did not agree with the terms of the contract for somebody who was an acting superintendent for a year, and I really just don't wanna speak about it. But I have my reasons for abstaining, and I don't wanna call people out for it, because I do have a lot to say if I really wanted to.
Attorney, do we have a rebuttal?
No.
No.
First of all, there's a motion, second a vote. So we can't stop the motion unless there's a point of order, and I haven't heard a point of order from this board.
Okay, all right. So Dr. Alderelli, you wanna make comments now?
Yes, sure. So in relationship to the, to the vision for not only STEM expansion, but academy expansion, to be honest with you. So we've got a few roadblocks. Number one, the space in both high schools, but we are currently addressing both of those pieces. And the goal is to be more inclusive than exclusionary, right? You still have to have a form of criteria for placement, right? You have to not only adhere to those, but also revisit them to make sure that they are equitable, that they are in line with, you know, district expectations and content standards as well. But one of the things I think that we can do a better job is offering opportunities, not only in STEM, but in business programs, in medical, and all of those pieces, creating little mini academies. And this is, this is all part of the strategic planning program. It's all embedded in our programs and pathways, and what we value in relationship to our portion, portrait of a graduate, is to provide mini academies within our schools, so that we can provide in-depth opportunities for kids to engage in content and skills that they demonstrate capacity in and an interest in, and also provide them with real-world. um, and also provide them with real-world experiences, um, for internships. I mean, Edison, Edison is the, you know, is, has more opportunity in relationship to local businesses, um, parents who have, um, access to, uh, positions in IT and business and in finance. So we need to start tapping into the stakeholders to provide our students with the opportunity, um, to get trained in an area that they see themselves, right? And not every, and here's the other piece too, on the flip side of that, not everybody has a four-year path, right? And, and you know, I'll utilize, you know, my boys as an example too, right? They, they may not necessarily be college, you know, college-bound, but that doesn't mean that they shouldn't have access to a career and what interests them. And providing opportunities to know, hey, what, what does it look like? What's the pay scale for an electrician currently right now? What is the training that goes behind that? What are opportunities in Edison Township where we can have a group of students that are interested in HVAC, uh, plumbing, um, being mechanic, any of those components, right? Or even being in the technical field, um, you know, uh, in relationship to, uh, the medical field, right? Doing scans, all of those pieces need to come together at an early age. And, and believe it or not, it shouldn't start in high school. It's actually gotta start in the middle school. That's where we really have to start piquing interest, doing interest-based and, um, career inventories, uh, which we do a pretty good job at right now, but the, our strategic plan is really focused in that area on making sure we have access for those students and creating little mini kind of communities within our schools with the space that's permitted to, and, and exposing more students than less. That would be the goal. That's my vision for that, and it's also my job to execute it as well.
Great, thank you so much. So as stated, the vote will be during the regular meeting, one of the agenda items. So this ends our, uh, public hearing, motion to end public hearing for Superintendent's contract.
Motion.
Mr. Romano?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Bang, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Now we move on to our regular meeting for today. Um, greetings, Edison community. We hope you all had a enjoyable and relaxing summer with your families and are getting settled in with the new twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As Board of Education, we take pride in all the achievements of the school district and we look forward to continued celebration of the achievements in this new upcoming year. We are pleased to have witnessed one of the smoothest back-to-school years in so lo- in so long. And we are very grateful to our Superintendent Dr. Eldar Ali and his administrative team, all the principals at the building level and all the staff members and teachers and the entire Edison School District staff to bringing it all together. Thank you so much. Um, along with that, of course, all the amazing parents and students, uh, keep up the good work. Uh, before we began the school year, the day before, we had a wonderful convocation. One of the best shows put together in years by our Superintendent Dr. Eldar Ali. Uh, such events brings together the staff at one place and reinstated the spirit and, you know, it's a testament to all the good things that we do over here, and we take pride in that. This month, there were so many good back-to-school nights, um, all the parents took advantage of it. Um, EHS and JP band festivals and awesome games where I think the schools are at a good start in the beginning of the year. Um, and, um, how can I not talk about successful launch of the new, brand-new, amazing website? Thanks to our communication director, Heather Daniel. Um, today, we will hold the public hearing for, we hold, we held the public hearing for extension of, extension of Superintendent's contract and John Marshall lease purchase, both of that very incredible things that we are proud of and will speak more to it, um, and vote on it later on. Uh, we look forward to a productive meeting today and encourage public participation, including the music. If anyone wants to play any music, feel free, we'll, we'll be happy, give you six minutes for that music. You can spend time on that, we love that, as long as it's a good one. Um, personally, I would like to also tha- thank all the parents, all the teachers, staff members, principals, and students. And when we witnessed a wonderful back-to-school year and really happy to see people here in public who come and speak, very value, very much value your time, and it's really encourage that because very few have spent their time and come in the public meeting and speak. So thank you so much for being here today and participating in our meeting, right? Uh, that being said, I will pass on to Dr. Eldar Ali for Superintendent's report.
Thank you so much, Board President Patel. Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I hope all is well with you. Uh, just a couple highlights, um, for the month of September currently right now. Uh, just echo, uh, Mr. Patel's sentiments in relationship to the start of the school year. Um, that was evidenced by the smiles, uh, on our students and, and staff members' faces, uh, particularly at, uh, the schools in which expansion projects have been finalized. I can tell you, um, especially over Thomas Jefferson, the look on the students' faces um, from the seventh and eighth grade students when they walked into the building at first, just the smiles on their face to look at, um, their new entranceway, brand-new gymnasium. Um, it, it really is, um, just a testament to not only the work that was done behind the scenes, but also the work of this board and, and previous administrations and their vision to put those peo- you know, put, put, um, vision into action. Um, and, uh, I know the anxiety that surrounds the beginning of school, right? From a teacher perspective, the butterflies in the stomach that happened on, uh, you know, before opening day. Uh, and that happens for building principals and, and believe it or not, it even happens for superintendents as well too. So, um, just, uh, wanted to compliment, uh, everybody uh, who's done a wonderful job to make the beginning of twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-five school year a huge success. Um, as part of our, um, as part of my report each month, um, I will be updating the board in relationship to, um, the strategic plan and where we are in specific, um, processes as well as, um, providing presentations from our co-chairs periodically over the course of this year. Um, you know, creating a vision and creating a mission for the school district is, is very hard work, but the most difficult work is the work that we have ahead, and that is implementation. And that is making sure that this document and this action plan that we collectively had, you know, close to five thousand people participate in, isn't something that just sits on the shelf. It's something that we measure, it's something that we revisit, and it's something that we value here. Um, and I think, um, you know, with the board's support, that we have a really, really good stepping stone in order to set this district on an unbelievable path. So just as a quick update currently right now, um, our co-chairs met last week uh, to be, to begin planning action steps for year one of their respective focus areas. And those areas are wellness, portrait of a graduate, uh, finance and facilities, um, engagement and programs and pathways. Uh, they are also in the process of creating a live dashboard for all stakeholders to see in relationship to how we're measuring those goals. So each of the action steps will be listed, as well as the Board of Education goals, and it'll also show you where we are in relationship to year one progress and overall progress over the course of the five years. Um, and this is something that is going to be readily available and updated throughout the month by all members of our, um, uh, of our initial committee in relationship to our co-chairs. And, uh, I can't compliment them enough as well as their team members, uh, for the, for the work that they've done. And, uh, you know, looking forward to reporting out on all the great things that we, that we're doing. Um, I, I would be remiss in, in, in not mentioning this. I, I was able to be on the sidelines for J P Stevens' first football win and, and I think, was it five years? I think it was two, or six years, might have been two thousand eighteen was, was potentially the last win.
Yeah, forty-one games.
Right? Um, what an unbelievable game that was. It went into overtime. Uh, and, uh, I, I was fortunate, there might be a video of me of, you know, slapping, you know, high-fiving the building principal at that time when we punched in the extra point, uh, to, to go ahead. So, a, a big shout-out and congratulations to not only the players, but to the coaches, to the fans that stormed the field. That was a, uh, a, a long deserved win and it, and it just is a testament to, uh, the hard work that everybody put in to make, um, their first win in a long time, a successful one. And congratulations to the athletic directors as well too. I know they put a lot of work in behind the scenes and, um, and did a great job in scheduling, uh, for this year also. Uh, quick update in relationship to transportation. Uh, the subscription busing portal will open, uh, tomorrow, couple weeks, um, earlier than we anticipated. I think there are initial target date, um, was October fifteenth. We are gonna open it up the first. Uh, correspondence is going, went out today, um, in relationship to the timeframes and the parameters as well as the cost. Um, if you have any questions in relationship to that, please feel free to reach out to your transportation department and utilizing the help desk, um, to answer your questions, uh, as well as, you know, criteria. And it's, it'll be going out to, to that, those families that are currently eligible. Uh, last but not least, um, we, uh, we value all the work that Board of Education members do um, and the volunteer, uh, volunteerism that they put behind the scenes. Uh, it was brought to my attention recently that our Board of Education president um, has received another accolade in relationship to his certification um, and his path to become a certified board leader. Am I correct in that, uh, Mr. Patel? Yep, and I'll just read you a couple pieces, uh, about some of the things that Mr. Patel had to go through in order to demonstrate his dedication to not only Board of Education, but to the community as well too. Uh, Mr. Patel has an additional twenty credits, um, for a total of sixty BMA credits um, from all of the additional core areas, right? And that would be, uh, ethics, finance, the, all of the components that make up a Board of Education member. Um, uh, the criteria in, in, um, in service as well too is met. Um, they must meet, um, all CBL requirements for certification leaders, stuff that you can read on our website too. I see the executive director, um, also is on top of this plaque as well too, which is a great accolade. Um, the, uh, NJBSA, uh, will not only bank these credits, but they'll also be applied to his designation for further pieces. So, um, without any further hesitation, Mr. Patel, if I could just briefly read this, New Jersey School Boards Association Board Member Academy, Mr. Bureau Patel. You are among the elite group of school board members who have completed the requirements for the Board Member Academy program and are hereby awarded the designation of Certified Board Leader of August twenty twenty-four, uh, a testament to your commitment to, uh, learning and, uh, and advancement in your position here. So, um, congratulations, uh, responsible, uh, well-deserved. So it's my pleasure. So maybe a round of applause from the audience? And that concludes my comments for this evening.
All right, thank you so much. Uh, next is student council representatives. We'll first start with Derek Dudek, uh, from Edison High School. And you have unlimited time.
Hello, my name is Derek Dudek and I'm the student council president for the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And I think the year's gotten off to a good start with everything going smoothly, starting with the, uh, freshman orientation we had in August. I think the freshmen learned a lot and also enjoyed their time too with the bouncy house we had in the big gym for high schoolers. And, uh, back-to-school night was also a success. And today, we just had our co-curricular fair in the cafeteria after school where all kinds of different students came and started to, looking to get, started to get involved in the different clubs we have at the high school. And coming up next month, we have, in the week of the twelfth, we have our Spirit Week. We'll have days like Pyjama Day, uh, Sports Jersey Day and EHS Merch Day, leading up until the pep rally that we'll have on, on that Friday. After, at the end of school, we're going to have, uh, students dunked on by water buckets and a baseball-inspired, uh, inflatable mascot race around the track going into our homecoming game that we'll have that Friday night against, where Edison's going to beat South Brunswick. And the next day, of course, is the homecoming dance on October nineteenth. And a couple of things I've heard from classmates around the school uh, include thoughts about the new phone policy where nobody can have their device out in class unless they want it taken away to the office for the day. And obviously, some people think it's annoying, but I don't think it's been an issue so far. And from what I know, it's at least been a little bit helpful in students, helping students pay attention in class. And the only real complaint that I've, I've heard and agree with is how crowded the halls are between classes and how difficult it is to get to the next class on time. I know that's something that's, it's definitely no easy solution to that. Besides, the only thing I could think of is possibly increasing the time between classes slightly to make it easier, but other than that, there aren't any real issues. And overall, I think the year's going well so far and we have lots to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and your comments. Uh, next is J P Stevens, Bill Tang.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Tang and I am one of the two co-presidents of the Student Council at J P Stevens High School. So with school having started about a month ago, our school community is gradually transitioning back to school and classes. We had the new student orientation on August twenty-eighth, back-to-school night on September twelfth, picture day on the thirteenth, and pushed out four issues of our weekly digital magazine, The Weekly. We also hope that all of this will help our student body get a, um, better understanding of what is happening this year. Furthermore, our extracurricular activities and athletics are also starting with many clubs already organizing fundraisers and hosting interest meetings, while our athletic teams are also representing our school at meets and games. As Dr. Eldar Ali had said, our football game has won our first homey of the year and our girls volleyball team is going strong, scoring multiple victories. Our school martial band has also officially started with their first home show this year on September twenty-eighth, which is last Saturday, and they have performed amazingly despite the unideal weather conditions. And in preparation for October's Week of Respect, J P Stevens' Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Student Leadership Team have come together to plan out various interactive lessons in the form of activities, presentations, and videos. The team's goal is to recognize and respect, but more importantly, to amplify and inspire impact and change. And lastly, we had our, um, Spirit Day Week for leading up to our pep rally and tailgate event which happened on Friday. The student council and administration had collaborated on an effort to expand and raise school spirit by implementing fun, battle-of-the-classes-style activities that any student could participate in while also recognizing our student athletes. Moreover, we had successfully held our first official tailgate to celebrate J P's Diamond Jubilee. The tailgate saw a great turnout with many students showing up to have fun, play games, eat snacks, and in general, just support our football team as well as get the chance to witness some of our beloved teachers and administrations in the Dunk Tank, which is definitely a huge, um, highlight for many students. And this concludes everything happening at John P. Stevens High School as of today. We plan to have our, um, Club Fair or Co-Curricular Fair on October ninth and then the, um, oh, my mistake, the Freshman Social on October ninth and the Co-Curricular Fair on October tenth. And it is such a pleasure to be up here and thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Uh, you folks may choose to leave if you, your school tomorrow, so it's up to you. All right, uh, next we'll move on to public comments for resolutions only. Any public comments on resolutions only?
About the complaint?
Matt?
About the complaint?
This is public comments on resolutions only, so Matt Revnak is the speaker, next speaker.
Good evening. Matt Revnak, ETA president. Um, just, I believe there's one correction that needs to be made, actually two of them, on the personnel report. Um, on page thirty-two, it's Charlotte Caporino. And, um, to top of page thirty-three is Lindsay Moragliato. Um, basically have taken effect on ten-one. Um, these people started their work here earlier. I believe that should be not pro-rated but retroactive. Um, they actually started their position in, I believe it was August first. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments on resolutions? Jerry?
Uh, question about a couple of the policies that's coming up. Uh, thirty-three, twenty-four, right, for privacy? And forty-three, twenty-four, uh, to me, they're identical. And one is for, uh, teaching staff, the other is support staff members. So has the committee considered combining them? Because we have way too many policies. Um, that's a number is too much, but I think the wording is almost identical. Uh, the other things I, I brought up last time is, is about policy, uh, one, four, three dot two, uh, about the last sentence, well, the, in the, in the, before the last paragraph, student representative should rotate each school year among the high schools. We have two high schools. And we have been, you know, they've been coming to the school board each, uh, each high school. And we shouldn't be keeping that. We should continue to, to let both of them come at one meeting. So, um, I don't know, after I, I, I mentioned, what did the, the committee consider uh, changing that, uh, the policy? And also, there's a policy, the last policy is ninety-one, eighty-one. Uh, that's, this is about volunteering for, uh, coaches and for That's, this is about volunteering for coaches and for other activities. And if you look at towards the end of the policy, it says that anyone who wants to do the volunteer work needs to have a substitute certification. We have a lot of parents who are willing to come in to help for sports and/or for some other technology things like, you know, now we're going to AI, computers. I can say probably a lot of them do not have that certificate. Is that a must to have in order for them to come in and help, volunteer for any of the activities? We know that we have robotics, we have drones, we have all of that. So I don't know if there's any flexibility on that particular policy. And also, there's also, there's approval for the curriculum guide for all the, all the grades for middle school and high schools. And to me, it's, the school already started and we're putting out these curriculum guides. I don't know if our teacher is gonna, you know, get enough time to follow this. Maybe we should have them, you know, before the school starts, so our teaching staff can know what are the changes in those curriculum guides, so they can implement in their class prep for this, for the new school year. So, you know, approving these in September seems late to me. But maybe I'm missing some of the stuff, but, you know, you know, we, the, one of the, the, the complaints that we heard from some of the staff is the curriculum change every year. We need some stability for that. I know everything's changing, but we need some stability. And for the curriculum guide to be approved in September, to me, is a little bit late. That's just my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I'll start with, I think the first question was the redundancy of 33-24 and 43-24. We have to have two separate policies in relationship to?
Yeah, the, the way the policy book is set up, the manual is set up, is that there's a policy for staff and there's a separate section for support staff. So that's why they may look identical and they may be exactly identical, but it does relate one to the certificated staff and one for the support staff.
Perfect. I believe the other policy was the high school representative as well, too. This policy indicates a minimum of one, the regulation provides the Board of Education latitude to incorporate two at each of these particular meetings. And three, if we were to utilize the Edison Success Academy at some point as well, too.
Mr. Super, Dr. Su, I really, the also, the Board President pursuant to parliamentary procedure can invite anyone on the dais, provided that the policy allows for it to begin with.
91-80, 81, school volunteers. So, yes, it also does provide flexibility. It actually relies, there is a, a certain number of days that an individual can volunteer, as long as they're vetted by the Raptor system and approved by the building principal, for parents to come in and do a lot of the things that you talked about, right? They could assist in the cafeteria, they can assist with, you know, small presentations, do things along those lines. It provides the building principal latitude. This one is more along the lines for a coaching and co-curricular piece, too. Something that's a little bit more regimented, right, that meets weekly over the course of, you know, anywhere between 12 to 15 weeks. We want to make sure that, you know, somebody that's, and predominantly after school, that's what that provides as well, too. But definitely provides the flexibility in relationship to that. I think that was it, in relationship to policies, was the curriculum guides as well, too. Yeah, so, yeah, so, so, fair point, Mr. Shi, in relationship to that. We, we definitely, you know, the both chief academic officers, as well as the departments, have presented the curriculum. Most of these are updated based off of new standards as well, too. So even though the guides weren't approved, the standards are rolled out from individual departments as well, you know, from an elementary perspective, science and things along those lines. But I agree with you. It probably makes a little bit more sense to approve them. The standards are just aligned, the, you know, the curriculum is aligned to the standards, so we have to follow them from a state mandate, anyway.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments for resolutions? Saying done, motion to end public comments on resolutions?
Motion.
Second. Mr. Romano, Mr. Vishal Patel, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, at this point, we will take a vote on motion to approve personnel report. Can I have a motion to approve personnel report?
Motion.
Mr. Romano, Mr. Vishal Patel. This one is a motion to approve personnel report, which also includes Superintendent Dr. Eldarally's contract extension. And there was a motion, so roll call, Mr. Thoth.
Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. White?
I have to abstain.
On, on, only the?
Wherever I have a conflict, yes, on everything else.
Noted. Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Dr. Eldarally.
Thank you very much.
Very well deserved.
I appreciate the board's support. Thank you.
This is, this brings me a lot of joy, as I'll have the privilege to sign on Dr. Eldarally's new contract. And that's, nothing is bigger pleasure than that. And his, under his leadership, so many good things will hopefully continue in the school district, so thank you. Alright, next up is motion to approve administration curriculum and instruction and pupils' special services reports. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Mr. Romano?
Second.
Mr. Vishal Patel, a roll call, Mr. Thoth.
Yes, Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr., Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve finance reports, and this includes lease purchase. Right, Mr. Thoth?
Yes.
Alright, motion to approve finance reports?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Romano?
Second.
Mr. Vishal Patel, a roll call, Mr. Thoth.
Yes. Mr. Lugo?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Vice President Romano?
Yes.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So the board approved Superintendent Dr. Eldarally's extension without the, we missed the music, nobody was prepared for it. But wish we could have a comment with the music, but anyways, he's still a rock star and we take pride in that. And the John Marshall lease purchase, when it goes out to bid, this will be extremely beneficial to the students. It's going to resolve the crisis we have at that school. And hopefully, the board continues to work in the direction of, you know, construction, wherever possible, to resolve the overcrowding crisis. Right, next up is committee reports. We have Finance Audit and Oversight Committee, it was held on September 24, 2:00 PM. That, the discussion items, but in attendance were myself, Mr. Lugo, Mr. Romano, and Mr. Schneider. The committee discussed John Marshall lease, presented by DMR, the same thing that you saw today. And there were several contracts and change orders and other procurement items that were discussed. And all these things are listed on the agenda under finance reports. So anyone can feel free to go and take a look, because I don't want to bore anyone over here by reading that long report, which is visible out there on the agenda. So I'll spare some, you know, time for going, instead of going over that, feel free to take a look and ask Mr. Thoth if anyone has any questions later on. Alright, the next one was Curriculum Technology and Student Achievement Committee. And in attendance was myself, Mrs. Gomer, and Mr. Rick Cohen. Mr. Cohen and Mrs. Gomer reviewed the curriculum guides. They were revised this summer and provided information about why the revisions took place. K-12 EL and math curriculum were revised due to new standards required by NJDOE. In ELA, many of the existing standards were broken down even further. And in math, some standards were moved as well as added. The gifted and talented kindergarten push in units were added and as we continue to grow the critical thinking program. New elective courses at middle school curriculum that documents were written. Forensic science, public speaking, photography, student enterprise, the business entrepreneurial theater, digital design studio, form and fire and make and create and innovate. Science courses were revised to include climate change mandates. AP courses were revised to reflect to the AP syllabus from the College Board. STEM courses were revised to reflect the AP syllabus from the, the latest technology and include interdisciplinary and innovation projects. A number of elective courses at the high school were updated to reflect new standards. New world language course curriculum were written, Spanish communication and culture and Spanish heritage, too. The courses were K-25 EL and elementary, K-25 math, gifted and talented, and a middle school math primate. MS Geometry, MS STEM, Aces, MS Sixth Third Science, the Seventh Life Science, Eighth Physical Science, Forensic Science, Mic Drop, and Public Speaking. And at high school, there are quite a few courses, again, all these things are in the agenda under the curriculum report. Anyone can feel free to take a look and, you know, any questions, please reach out to anyone here. Or best is, should enable to Dr. Eldarally. And he'll be happy to provide an answer and explain in detail. Alright, thank you so much, everyone. Now, one of the things that I want to, before moving on to the board member comments, is, it has been brought to my attention that there has been some public discussion regarding the board's meeting calendar and the potential for once again having caucus meetings once a month. It was also brought up at the ETA candidate night last week. You guys had one of those things as a question in your lightning round or some other round. And the candidates, potential candidates, candidates, and they responded to it. And I personally also received emails and correspondences from public regarding this. The prior board voted on board's calendar and all the caucus meeting in last year's fall were canceled, as far as I know, unless I'm forgetting something here. So that makes me think personally that the board and administration felt that since the board is very productive during its voting session meetings, that the caucus meeting was not necessary at that time. Now, from what I understand, speaking with administration and Dr. Eldarally, between the board's regular meeting and the efficient use of board's committee meetings, the board's regular voting meetings are extremely efficient and streamlined. Therefore, they don't require a caucus meeting monthly in the fall. There were caucus meetings in, from January till July. This is, we are talking about fall. However, because there has been this public discussion of caucus meeting, I am directing Superintendent Dr. Eldarally to review the need of the caucus meeting for fall, for the upcoming three months. The board will vote on the meeting calendar again in January to review the need and discuss this matter with the board members between now and in the next few days. And if the administration with the majority feels there is a change required in adding a meeting, then absolutely, yes, we will add a meeting. If Dr. Eldarally, administration, and the board together collectively decide not to add the caucus meeting, we will not be adding the caucus meeting. So it is not my personal decision whether to add meeting or not. This has to be evaluated by the administration and with the input of board members. So Dr. Eldarally, if you can reach out to the board members in coming days, and then we will, we will report back. If, if the decision is made to add an October meeting, you will see one pop up. If the decision is not made, then it will be reported back. Dr. Eldarally will report back his findings about the caucus meeting with complete transparency and details. Thank you so much. Now, we'll open up this to board member comments. Any board member comments? Patel? Yes, Mr. Vishal Patel?
Thank you. So as a board member and a concerned parent, I believe it's our responsibility to ensure that parents are informed about significant aspect of their children's life. Policy 57-56 undermines that, that right. It makes it optional for administration to inform parent about the gender choices of their children. And it undermines the fundamental role the parents play in guiding their children. So, and I know Ms., you know, Ms. Anjana Patel and Ms., you know, Mr. Chris Lugo was very concerned about this topic even before they got on the board. And it was part of their campaign agenda. So I urge the board member to consider abolishing this policy and reinforcing the importance of communication between, open communication between schools and families. And I'd like to, you know, put the motion to abolish policy 57-56.
I'll second.
So what is, can you read her, what's the motion?
Abolishing, abolishing policy 57-56.
Is any? Okay.
This is second. So now is there, you should call for discussion.
Okay, so, any board members, any discussion? Mr. Lugo?
Yeah, thank you, Board President. And Board Member Vishal Patel, you're absolutely 100% correct. This is something that we were most definitely concerned with. We did campaign on it. And I can speak for myself, I fully believe in what you had just said. This, this is something going forward. We do have legal, legal, our, our legal representation, they are looking at this, digging a little bit further. And we're also, you know, we are also taking into consideration the legal gains and the legal pitfalls that other districts have actually experienced as well, so we could actually leverage them and use them to our advantage with moving forward, okay? So you, you are 100% correct. I don't necessarily think that there's a board, there's a board member who's sitting up here in the dais that, that actually believes otherwise, that parents should be kept in the dark. I don't, from what I understand, I don't think anybody here has ever communicated that to me. But, but, but you're, you're absolutely right. I mean, 57-56 does put, does put us in a bind and is, you know, not fault of our own. I mean, it is, you know, put into state law, unfortunately. So, you know, we do need to find a way to navigate that. However, but to your point, you're absolutely correct. We stand in alignment with the parents and their rights, you know, to be informed with the, with the decisions that their, you know, that their, their children are making, you know, especially decisions that could have catastrophic consequences.
Thank you. Thank you.
Board President?
Yes, Ms. White?
I just want to say, don't get me wrong, 57, 57-56 is not about whether children should change their identity. It's about the parents being informed. And parents need to know what's happening to their children in order to provide the best support. I mean, we all know, who loves the children the most is the parent, who's ultimately responsible for the children until they turn 18. It's the parent, not the state government. We have entrusted the, the Policy Committee Chair, Brian Rivera, with this issue for months and months. We have heard nothing. This issue rise last year during the campaign trail already. And we have waited a whole year. We don't see any resolution. We don't hear any possible, you know, resolution at all. So, but we have to know. Every day this policy remained in effect is a day that parents are kept in dark. So therefore, I think we should, I'm going to vote for abolishing this policy.
Any other board member comments? Mr. Rivera?
So Eddie, are we allowed to discuss what the attorney says? Because it says attorney-client privilege, attorney-work product.
Hello?
Alan, that was a, a brief that was provided by Inglesino and Taylor in relationship to guidance on how to proceed with this policy 57-56.
Implementation of the policy?
The options in relationship to modification of the policy, keeping the policy as is, and the potential to abolish the policy. um, keeping the policy as is and the potential to abolish the policy that uh, Mr. Patel just had said as well.
Mr. Rivera, you are allowed to speak on any opinion that you have. Um, you cannot read from the legal opinion, but if you have an opinion, even if it's based upon the legal opinion, you are allowed to express it, but you cannot disclose attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. So, a couple of months ago, and I want to give Mr. Merrill a lot of credit, you know, he came out multiple times to plead his case. And for someone to do that, I have the most out, most respect for you for for doing that. So when he made those comments, I thought it was important for us to meet to discuss this. We've met with the policy meeting, we met with the people that are actually on the policy meeting. Vishal actually asked to attend the meeting, so he was a part of the conversation. And it was a very good productive meeting. Um, at the end, we did ask the attorney to let us know what our options are. Because again, this is a very controversial policy. We don't want to, you know, if anyone knows anyone, Chris nailed it saying that everyone has parental, care about parental rights here. Um, but again, this is a a interesting and very tricky policy. So what we did was we hired a Gl- Inglisino and Taylor to come in to actually give us some feedback. They gave us a background of the policy. They talked about what other districts are doing. And they actually gave us three particular options. I believe Vishal actually said at a board meeting uh, a couple of months ago. The the hardest thing about this was, like I just said now, we can't, I can't share what the attorney said. But the attorney gave us three options. The attorney gave us the recommended option. And that's why um, we pretty much haven't really discussed it. Um, so the reality is, I wasn't sure if we were allowed to this. I was told that we can't share this and now.
You can't share the document, but again, if you have made a deduction of your own opinion, you can, if there's debate, you can, you know, whatever that deduction is based upon the meeting, based upon what the attorney said. If you've made a, come to your own conclusion or opinion, you may express that at uh, in discussion now.
The attorney provided an option and it was an option that protects the district, protects the staff members, um, protects the child. Um, so i- it's, my opinion is, again, I'm for parental rights, but I'm also here to protect everybody. Um, and that was the recommendation from the attorney. But I guess Eddie, I don't know if you want to add anything to this.
Board President?
Yes, Mrs. Wang.
Brian, you, if you couldn't share with the public even for the legal issue, you could probably share with the other board members if you are ready to move forward with this policy. Right? We have started, the conversation started, we asked the policy committee to look into this issue months ago and we have, I mean, for me, I have not hear anything. And what what's there for board transparency and for board collaboration to resolve this issue? I have seen none. So could you give us, I know, a timeline that when do you, what's the next step? When do you plan to have this resolved or when do you have to have a proposal of what's the next step? I hope it's not after the election.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera, you want to respond to that?
People amaze me. Um, I could definitely share the document with you. Um, I know Vishal was aware of it, Chris was aware of it. It's interesting, um, and the policy people, people on the policy committee were aware of that document. But if you want to see it, you're more, I'll be more than welcome to share, happy to share it with you.
Could you share a timeline that what was the next step or what do we?
Sh- Shannon, I mean, we have a motion on the table, we have a second, it's a discussion, we're gonna vote on it one way or the other, so.
Yeah, Mr. Vishal Patel, so. Yeah, Mr. Patel.
Unless there's a point of order, Mr. Rivera was determined to have the floor. He can have the floor. He was allowed, Ms. Pang to make a deci- uh, interrupt and ask a question. He's still allowed, he still has the floor unless you concluded.
No, I'm fine with it. And you know, these are just the games they play.
No.
Now, just for parliamentary procedure, you have the floor, you rescind, you received it, so move on.
Let me, uh, so there's.
It's not a game for the students or for the parents.
One second, Mrs. Wang, and I'll do one more round.
You shouldn't say this is a game. This is not a game.
Shannon, I'll do one more round for board member comments if any. Uh, before that, I have a question for the attorney. So, well, we we have had motions come on the floor before in this um, board, this throughout the year. So I understand the motions come on the floor. What is the process? And this this policy is, yeah, something that, you know, raises eyebrows of certain people, something that people have to own whether they vote yes or no. There are, there are implications to it. And I was a part of the policy committee where, and I was in that meeting. So a whole lot of things were discussed as you briefed and whatever allowed, not allowed is one thing. And as Vishal, you are also a part of that. And uh, you know, like Mr. Lugo, Mr. Vishal Patel, Mrs. Pang, Mr. Rivera, all of us. I myself strongly agree that if, now, I'm not talking about the policy here, but from, I understand at this point, is we are talking about not informing the parents, I personally am absolutely opposed to that. The parent has to know what's going on with the child, absolutely. So that's, that's one part of that, right? The policy may have other things and implications and those are the things that were a part of discussion. Uh, so coming to the point of the question to attorney is since there's a motion on the table, uh, motion on the floor and.
No motion on the table. There's a motion in the second. I need a motion on the table.
I did. Sorry, motion to uh, for the vote, motion to vote. Uh, what is the option the board has right now to discuss in a closed session or there is no such option if we want to all discuss? Uh. It's it's a vote. I mean, I put a motion, Shannon, seconded, it has to be voted.
Yeah, the answer is yeah, that was. My illegal thing, my parliamentary posi- uh, position is that there's a legal motion on the table. The motion has been seconded. It's the appropriate time. We are allowed to have debate. Debate is to be done in public on a motion. Uh, there's nothing privileged or confidential that needs to be on a policy that needs to be discussed and exec. So uh, at this point, unless there's a superseding motion, this the, you can call the question. Take a a vote up or down.
Okay. Alright, so any board member comments?
Sir?
Yes, Mr. Romano.
Could you please read the motion?
Motion to abolish policy fifty seven fifty six.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know. I apologize, Mr. Patel. Is there a company, I don't know your policies, regs, I don't have access to them online. Is there an up, a a corresponding regulation as well? I I don't have access to that, Doc.
According to Dr. Alderely, it's a Strauss estimate.
I don't believe there is.
Okay, so then it's just, just for the audience, the motion is just for the policy. There is no regulation that corresponds. If there was a regulation that corresponds, you'd have to have a separate vote or join that.
Right, together.
The policy, yes. So at this point.
So I have a motion on the abolishment uh, five seven fi- five seven five six by Mr. Patel. Vishal Patel. And the second was?
By Ms. Pang.
A roll call?
Roll call, Mr. Lugo.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Based on attorney's recommendation, I say no.
Ms. White?
I think we need to see what the attorney's recommendation is. And I'm just gonna take this opportunity right now to say why it is so very important, why we continue with the caucus meetings before the regular action meeting. So these things can be discussed and we can make, you know, honest, informed decisions. How can you make this decision without knowing what's in that document? I mean, we need to know this so that we can do the right thing, the right way. As far as my own opinion, I don't agree with that policy it, even a little bit. But I think we need to know what is in that document before we can decide.
Is that a?
It's an abstain. It's a no.
It's a no.
It's a no. Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Pang?
Yeah, the pa- committee had a meeting in June and so far, it's not about another caucus. So far, we have not hear anything to be shared with the board. So, oh, yeah, of course, I said the vote is yes.
Vice President Romano?
No.
President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Any board member comments? Any other board member comments?
Thank you.
Uh, sir?
Yes, Mr. Romano?
If this goes to court, can the court overrule us? Sir?
What do you, I'm not sure overrule.
If we, if we, if we voted to abolish this, can the state or a a higher court?
Well, the state, well.
The state's rule is what?
Well, anybody could file suit against the board, obviously.
And where do we stand, sir?
Well, the court cases are saying, you know, that there, the, there was a mission by the Attorney General's Office that the policy, they only can issue guidance, they can't require us to pass, you know, pass it one way or the other. There is a, the court's theory is that there is already an LAD policy in place. And discrimination against a sexual affiliation, sexual affection is covered under that policy. So there's a, there's a theory in, either way. Um, and it all depends on the judge you get. The decision um, that was done out of, uh, I believe it's Morris County decision out of Monmouth County are not precedential in Middlesex County. So the judge in Middlesex County can have a different determination.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other board member comments before we open up to public in general?
I just have one other thing. Congratulations, Eddie.
Thank you very much.
In the midst of all this, congratulations. And I know it seems an awful long time ago, but that convocation was outstanding. And anybody that was there would have to agree and it's really too bad that the public doesn't get to see that. You know, there's so much positive energy and it just sets the whole school year off on actually the right foot. It's, uh, you know, it was a pleasure to be there. You were amazing. So were, you know, so were all the other speakers and you know, everybody that worked so hard to pull that all together, cause it was huge. And uh, it was just a really wonderful thing. But just to back up just a bit with the caucus meetings, I know we, we're not supposed to do that. But I for one, and you know how I feel about this, I have been very vocal about it. We need our caucus meetings. We need them so we can digest and go review. We cannot just put them aside. I could see in the summer, but not in the winter. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. White, I am in hundred percent agreement with you. We need caucus meetings. If anyone on the board objects it, they can object it, they can second to myself and Mrs. White now. And we can bring it back next month. If nobody says want to say in private to Dr. Alderely, that's fine too. But I'm also in favor of bringing the caucus meetings, uh, doing the caucus meetings. We always have had that, so that's fine. Um, any other board member comments? Yes, Mr. Lugo.
Thank you, Board President. I'd like to follow your lead and also congratulate Eddie, uh, Dr. Alderely. I'm sorry, Eddie. My apologies.
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Thank you very much.
My informal, I used to throw to you. Congratulations on a contract extension. And also too, I want to point out the victory at JP Stevens High School, first victory in a long time. But I want those young men on that field and everyone else to realize that you may have won the game, but the real victory is holding your head up high after every game, regardless of it's a win or if it's a loss. And kudos to, kudos to the team going back on the field, trying and trying and trying. It was a hard deserved win. And congratulations to them, you know, so I just wanted to say that to them.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? Alright, thank you, everyone. Now, we will open up for public comments. Mr. Roth, you want to like to read that statement?
Uh, I didn't have it with me, but I can.
John, you had it?
Oh, I mean, I know what it is. I've been doing it for thirty five years. Um, now it's time for public comment on any board items. Uh, please step forward to the microphone in an orderly manner. Be recognized by the chair, the President Burrell. You have six minutes. Uh, please address all comments to the president. Uh, this is not to be a question and answer period. It is your time to address the board on your issues uh, and issues of uh, that affect the operation of the board. Is, please, no defamatory, political or obscene comments. Um, and uh.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Roth. We will open up for public comments. We would like to have students go first, so they can leave and go home. Yes, miss? And please announce your name and address.
I will. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ria Patel and I am currently a junior at the Woodbridge Academy, but I grew up in Edison. It was just two years ago that I found myself at a Board of Education meeting just like this one, nervously pitching an idea for an enrich- an enrichment program. Little did I know that that would be the beginning of an incredible journey. Dr. Alderely, your guidance, your support and your invaluable time have made all the difference to the Learning Circle. You took the time to listen and offer constructive feedback to us. You encouraged us to refine our vision. With your membership, we were able to build a nonprofit organization from the ground up. You not only believed in our ideas, but you helped us navigate the complexities of the educational world yourself. A few weeks back over the summer, Neil Patel, a co-founder of the Learning Circle, along with some other Learning Circle volunteers, pitched an enrichment program to the Woodbridge Township. Today, I am extremely thrilled to announce that we are opening an enrichment program in collaboration with the Woodbridge Township. None of this would have been possible without your unwavering commitment to fostering innovation and community growth. None of this would have been possible without your time and your support. Thank you so much, Dr. Alderely. I look forward to continuing this journey and making a positive impact. And congratulations on your contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, yes, you can go ahead.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Adar Chet and I'm a senior at JP Stevens High School. And I'm the co-president of our initiative called Head Start Learning.
Um, hello, everyone. My name is Disha Varkala. It's nice to be here today and I'm also a senior at JP Stevens High School. And I'm the Director of Operations for the nonprofit Head Start Learning.
Our second co-president, Nadeba Batla, cannot be here today. However, we are here to talk about our initiative, which is called Head Start Learning. This initiative was started over the summer of twenty twenty during the wake of the COVID nineteen pandemic by three JP students alumni, Vibe Batla, Ayush Kaurapakla and Anirudh Hubadam, who saw increase, an increase in learning loss over the summer due to the lockdown.
Um, so when they saw this very big gap in education um, in the lockdown, what they, what these former JP Stevens students decided to do um, was to start this initiative called Head Start Learning, which tutors students. Um, it is a five oh one C three registered nonprofit and from um, today, it impacts over seven hundred students um, that have been tutored in a positive and impactful manner, uh, fu- fueling their academic endeavors. And we are continuing to run the program till this day with over twenty volunteers that we have recruited from various subjects with volunteers primarily coming from Edison Township, which is why we're here today.
This year was Head Start Learning's fourth iteration and it was originally created as a free of cost summer program and will continue to be created as a free of cost program in perpetuity that tutors students in mathematics, economics, web programming and public speaking in order to pique their curiosity and prep them for the coming school year, providing them a solid academic base in their high school and college careers, especially since most of our students are coming from elementary and middle school backgrounds.
And since a majority of the students who attend the summer classes at Head Start Learning come from New Jersey and specifically the Edison District, um, we wanted to ask about a potential partnership between the Edison Board of Education and Head Start Learning as a five one C three nonprofit.
We thought it would be best if we could ask for any sort of public endorsement or public advertising since most of our um, signups come from word of mouth advertising as well as social media. And we would really appreciate any assistance, since this has already benefited the Edison community for the past four years and we would love to continue a partnership in the shared interest of the Board of Education's mission of nothing less than excellence. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here today and uh, you should reach out to Superintendent Dr. Alderely and Mr. Dr. Huss to, you know, discuss further. But thank you so much for sharing your thoughts and ideas.
And we also have our chief academic officer in the back as well too, Mr. Cohen. Um, and I, and I, and uh, Ms. Patel can also kind of attest to this. Uh, we are, we are rigorous in vetting. we are rigorous in vetting these, these programs too. Sounds like you guys have been established now for four years. So we look forward to seeing the work that you've done. And if it's a, if it's a fit for Edison Township, we're, I, I think it's a wonderful thing. So, uh, Mr. Cohen and Mr. and Dr. Huss, you'll be able to kind of spearhead that? Does that sound good? All right, gang. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more students? Students sitting right there, you know, go for public comments. You good? Okay, awesome. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming to the board meeting regardless. All right. So, uh, public comments, next for public comments. Um, Matt, you can go first. No, Mr. Mara, I'll let Matt go first. Uh, no, that's all right, Matt. I call you, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna start with the good first. First of all, candidates night. I want to thank the seven candidates for the board. We had our candidates night last week, this past week. And I think a lot of information was gotten, which is what our job is to educate the public to make and become a more informed voter. Anyway, if you didn't get to get there or watch it on live stream, it's on youtube.com backslash at symbol E T E A 2023. And above the last year's, um, video that's there, if you click on live, you'll get to this year's video if you want to watch it at home. Second thing, the bus go off sale again for scholarships for our students at J.P. Stevens and Edison High is October 22nd. If anyone is interested, again, it's nice savings. You can contact Susan Campione over at Woodrow Wilson Middle School. We have our trunk or treat on October 20th at Menlo Park School from 12 to 2:00 P.M. Uh, we just had ten thousand flyers made out, which will be disseminated to the schools for our students to take home, so that the parents are aware of our trunk or treat on the 20th. World Teachers Day. We talked about the great start to school. October 5th is World Teachers Day. So first of all, thank you to all the teachers here in Edison for everything you do on a daily basis, an acknowledgement of World Teachers Day. But I also want to thank the people that live in Edison that may teach in other districts, because that applies to you as well. So thank you for your service and your time in developing our young people. Coming up this week, we have Rosh Hashanah. Good year to all who celebrate it. On October 3rd is Navratri. May the nine days of Navratri light up your lives. And we also have Yom Kippur. Uh, may you have a good final sealing. Finally, I want to talk about the vote you guys just took on this board policy. By repealing the board policy, which I could cure less either way, but I'm concerned about my members, your employees, my members. You have nothing in place now. So you're asking people if we need to disclose this to parents, which as a parent of two daughters, I personally have no issue with. But you're asking them then to violate the law. I also have to question, we have training, for example, yearly on FERPA rights for students. And I don't know how this also affects FERPA rights for students. You're putting our people without having some board policy in place in a very awkward position. If you were to repeal it and replace it with something, at least we can say, well, we have to abide by board policy. But if there's no policy in place, and we have to disclose this to parents, in theory, we are violating the law by doing so. So I have major concerns about what just happened, the protection of your employees, my members, and actually the members of every unit, including Mr. Ross's members as vice principals and principals in this district. So if you have this repealed, I suggest at some point in the very near future, you come up with some policy that at least we can say, by contract, we have to abide by board policy. It wasn't our decision to violate the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ravnak. And, uh, to your, uh, comment, last comment about the policy. Yeah, so this thing has been discussed from, you know, months and months in the board meeting, uh, by public. And like any policy, this is my personal thing, personal opinion, everything has a repercussion. This board have had motions on the floor. People make decisions whether yes or no. People, every individual made their decision. But I am also with you on and having concern about ifs and buts and what happens next. Repeal, replace, and some of the things were discussed in the committee. It's an area that requires a thorough legal review, as well as very careful consideration of repercussions. It's not something that can be taken lightly, right? Like I said it again, the board members said their opinion, yes or no, and some had comments. That's one thing. But I would also ask Dr. Alderelli to, and I'm sorry that increases work for the administration, and that's a sad part about this. But, uh, for the district, it's very important that Dr. Alderelli and your team take a careful look at it and whatever is needed to act upon it as in a timely manner.
Keith, can I just readdress only because my time wasn't up anyway? I, I understand where you're coming from. However, by repealing this policy, theoretically, that takes effect right now. Right now. So tomorrow, if a parent calls or a teacher needs to call or whatever, are we supposed to disclose this to parents at this time, which theoretically now is in violation of the law? That is my concern. And that's one of the reasons I have to agree again with, I believe Mr. Rivera mentioned it, Ms. White, of having a caucus separate, so that these things are discussed, all things are looked at in advance before you take this vote. Again, as a parent, I don't necessarily disagree what you guys are talking about here. However, you're putting a lot of people now in a very difficult position and theoretically asking them to violate the law because we have nothing in place. Thank you.
So thank you for bringing that to the attention. And again, speaking of the caucus, uh, you know, absolutely, there should be a caucus. But regardless of whether we have a caucus or not, there are motions on the floor throughout the year. When we had the caucus meeting, there were motions on the floor. When we did not have the caucus meeting, we had motions on the floor. Uh, so this has been happening around the year, and board members make a decision. But yeah, to, we have a lot of respect for your opinion. So speaking of that, we would seriously, uh, I would recommend Dr. Alderelli and ask him to take this as a utmost urgent priority. Right? Thank you. Anyone else for public comments? Uh, Mr. Mara?
Anthony Mara, five Coletto Court in Edison. I want to congratulate you all, all of you. You've addressed a difficult issue, and you've actually made a decision. Those of you who did not vote to abolish policy fifty-seven, fifty-six, I can only ask that you reconsider and give some thought to it. As far as difficulty, the policy itself creates difficulty. So I, for those who think it's, it's created a, a difficult situation, the policy itself, when it existed, created a difficult situation. So I, I commend you. Uh, I, I'm overjoyed. When I leave here, I'll probably be jumping up and down. And, and I've already texted my wife. Uh, well done. That's it. Well done.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Uh, Miss sitting right there. Yeah, next to Taryn. Please mention your name and address.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Shakila Merchant. I live at 248 West Locust Avenue, Edison, New Jersey, zero eight eight two zero. Um, thank you, President, uh, Board President Patel and the board members for the awesome work that we have been doing. I have two kids who just graduated and, um, gone to college. And congratulations to Superintendent Dr. Alderelli for your, um, extension on the, uh, contract. So, um, as a faculty and an educator and a researcher, I am curious to know more about the STEM vision. Um, being, uh, running a large program at New York, for the New York Public School System for the last twenty years, I know firsthand the importance of creating that or bridging the gap for STEM, um, for the college readiness for the students. Um, Edison schools do a wonderful job, no doubt about it. That's the reason why I moved from New York to New Jersey ten years ago. Um, but I'm just curious. Um, there is very little efforts being done in terms of STEM Academy. Um, Dr. Alderelli did mention about, um, you know, technology and engineering that is being added to the STEM Academy, which happens to be in Edison High School. Um, it's not just about science and math in STEM. It's about technology and, and, and engineering education. Um, I was curious if we are, uh, if you do have any vision about how to expand engineering education, number one. And also, how is the admission or the placement of the students coming from the middle school to the high school? Um, to my best knowledge, and I may be wrong, that there are only two hundred spots for the students to come to the STEM Academy. And, um, the curriculum in J.P. Stevens is very good. My kids went there. I am very well aware of that. But I just feel that the placement criteria does not have to be necessarily based off of whether the students have taken algebra or geometry in the middle school. But perhaps there should be a open placement or exams for some of the students who may not have taken those courses, but yet be eligible to come into STEM Academy, uh, at the ninth grade. So how about being a little inclusive in how we are recruiting our students? We are super competitive. Our parents are more competitive than our children here. I'm very well aware of that. But I just feel that, um, there might be more students who might be more eligible to get into it. And I would be more than happy to be part of such a, uh, discussion, or if there is anything that we can do as parents. And two more cents to add to what I have to say is maybe we can do a town hall meeting with the parents, know what the parents know about it. There are many parents who may not be even aware of how their kids have been placed, right? Um, we are, most of us are immigrants, for example. So how do we really bring that transparency and, and inclusiveness in, in doing that kind of a placement for the students? Just wanted to add that. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you. Uh, just one?
Yeah, really briefly. And again, what I'm, what I'm also doing right now, just for the board's sake, too, I'm actually writing all the questions down. We will be posting, um, more cohesive responses, um, in addition to the ones that I'm, that I'm about to give to, because I don't have all of the information in front of me currently right now. I know our, our placement criteria is located online. Um, but you do bring up a couple of good points in relationship to, um, you know, providing, um, multiple points of data in relationship to, uh, placement criteria. I know, uh, Mr. Cohen and myself, we're actually speaking about, um, not only STEM Academy, but other programs we have in relation to a placement criteria. It's actually going to be a topic of conversation, um, that we're going to talk about internally with our team prior to bringing it to a curriculum committee meeting. Um, some of the troubles that we do run into, listen, inclusivity is something that we want to, um, that we, that we pride ourselves on. Um, space is limited though as well too, right? So, and that's part of the reasons why we are, you know, have an aggressive agenda in relationship to expansion projects. Um, I think I want to draw the fine line, um, between providing more access, but also keeping our standards rigorous, right? And I would rely on the expertise of, um, our supervisors, our teachers, who are actually where the rubber meets the road, who are actually seeing the caliber of students that we have there too. And, uh, providing additional opportunities for students that may not be able to get into those STEM programs. But how are we integrating some of the aspects across the curriculum, right? So that, um, they might, might not be so intensive as an academy would be, but how are we sprinkling that in? And I'm confident we do do that now. And maybe we need to do a better job of articulating that. Is that, is that fair enough to say? Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's a great idea, and that's a good start. Um, I did read about a bridge program for the AP Biology. Why can't we start that for some other? And, and, and I do agree that rigor cannot be compensated or compromised, because that's what keeps us the best, uh, school district. So I agree with that, but I guess we could increase the number.
Yeah, we got to, I will tell you that one hundred percent. I've, Mr. Cohen, when, if you want to have a conversation within the back, I actually texted him with a plan, um, in order to how, how we are going to increase the number of students that have access to that program. But also, how do we expand academies in general too?
Absolutely. Great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. You got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next for public comments, uh, lady in the back. Uh, you, uh, yes, yourself. Please, um, say your name and address.
Lois Radler, seventy Sagamore Avenue, Edison. Um, I hope that my name sounds familiar because I sent an email to each one of you and Dr. Alderelli on August 29th. And I only heard back from Brian Rivera about my concern about the school calendar. The email stated that there are many holidays for religious and cultural ethnicities with a blatant omission of two major Christian holidays, Christmas and Good Friday. The following holidays are on the calendar for this school year, October 3rd to 4th, Rosh Hashanah, November 1, Diwali, January 29th, Lunar New Year, March 31st, Eid. On last year's calendar, September 25th was listed for Yom Kippur. Friday, November 10th was listed as Teachers Convention slash Veterans Day slash Diwali. We were not in school that day because of Teachers Convention, yet Diwali was noted. Even though we weren't in school, again, Diwali was noted at, on that school holiday. Yet Monday, December 25th to 29th was the winter break with no mention of Christmas, which is considered a federal holiday. It is the only religious federal holiday, yet it is never mentioned on the school calendar. Last year's calendar, Friday, March 21st, began spring break with no mention of Good Friday. I understand Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur is the holy days for the Jewish faith. Well, starting Holy Thursday through Easter is the Christian high holy days. I understand Easter shouldn't be mentioned. If you don't know, Easter is always on a Sunday. So I get it, that you don't mention Easter. But Good Friday, yes, Good Friday should be mentioned, not just spring break. On Wednesday, April 10th, was listed for Eid last year. Tuesday, April 23rd, was listed for Passover. Again, another non-Christian holiday. Your calendar does not reflect a fair representation of the diversity of our town. This year's calendar shows once again Rosh Hashanah, Diwali, Lunar New Year, and Eid, but there is no mention of any Christian holiday. Again, all religions have many holidays. I'm not asking for Ash Wednesday. I'm not asking for Ascension Thursday. I'm asking for our two major holidays to be listed on the calendar. I noticed, um, the new logo that says, "We are One Edison." I don't, I feel excluded. I don't feel that we are One Edison. When you do exclude this one group of people, it's a public school, which should show the respect to all students and staff. I would like to see the inclusion of Christmas and Good Friday on this year's school calendar. I don't even mind, you know, with the winter break, which is always around Christmas and Hanukkah, for it to state Christmas, Hanukkah, and this year, Kwanzaa is also in that same timeframe. There's two solutions. Include Good Friday and Christmas in the calendar, or be generic and just list the federal holidays and say school holiday for every other holiday and not specify Rosh Hashanah, or Diwali, or Good Friday, or Christmas. Just say school holiday. If these two holidays are not added to this year's school calendar, I do have the recourse of going to the state, because you aren't being inclusive of everyone in this town. Again, when I did see "We are One Edison," I do not feel that we are One Edison looking at the school calendar. It's a very easy fix. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, uh, thank you for your comments, Ms. Radler. And, uh, Ms. Talke, you also mentioned the same thing last meeting. And, uh, very valid points, uh, to include Christmas. It's a federal holiday. Good Friday is the stock market is closed and it's a holiday. But good news is that Dr. Alderelli is reporting that it's already included. And I will give the floor to Dr. Alderelli.
Yes, so, so, uh, forgive my delay in response in relationship to that. We actually took action on our district website for our Google Calendar. Both Christmas and Easter are both listed as days off in that, in that capacity. Um, I'm, I was actually just looking at it right now, just to confirm those pieces. Good Friday is, is not, um, which can be a discussion, you know, with amongst the administrative team. Um, but both Christmas and Easter are listed on the Google website calendar. You got it.
All right. Thank you.
I do like your other idea though as well too, is just writing school holiday.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you so much for the comments. Next. Yes, sir.
Um, hi. Um, this is my first board meeting. Uh, my name is Jagneesh Panaria, and, uh, I live in 205 Lindt. My name is Jagnesh Panaria, and I live in 205 Lenta Lane, Edison, New Jersey. I also want to mention the community name. It's Westgate Square 2, and there's a specific reason why I'm mentioning that. I first want to, you know, thank the board president and Dr. Alderelli on his tenure extension. And I'm actually happy to see these seats empty, which means there is not a lot of people with complaints over here, and the school year has gotten to a really great start. So kudos to all of you here managing this such a big township. I have a small, a little technical, and I heard the word "policy" probably more than any other word today in my hour and a half sitting here. So there's a policy slash technical glitch, and this is regards to a free busing allocation with my particular unit. There has been no communication about free, about subscription or free busing to me personally, and I didn't mind, or I didn't bother to check with anybody, because, you know, we, our community just got two buses allocated, I think, last year. And because of that, I didn't bother to, you know, bug any of the administrative officials or anyone with regards to why am I not getting free busing? I was just told I would get free busing, because my entire community gets it. When it came to the actual school day and handing out free subscriptions, I did not get any, and I was told that you are 1.968 miles, which is under 2 miles. So that's where it started. And then I questioned, you know, why not? And I told my son, "Sorry, you cannot go to bus." This is his first time going to the bus, by the way, to John Adams. And every single friend in our community goes to the bus, you know, free of cost, and he's not allowed to. We did not even get subscription busing forms. So now, you know, the reason I'm here today is because the funny thing that he mentioned is, we live in a townhouse. We don't have a single family structure. We don't live on streets which are alternately marked. It's a crazy branch-leaf structure. If you look at a map, you will see that, and maps are erroneous when it comes to our community, Westgate 1 and Westgate 2. This is the reason I mentioned you, my community. It's been, the one thing that brings me here today is my son complaining that the neighbor who we share a roof with has free busing, but we don't. And as a dad who wants to set right example for his son to make sure policies and things are seen through till the end, I want to make, you know, I wanted to make time and just come up, come up in front of you guys. So that's number one. So there's a lot of policy talk. I don't have, I think, two years back, we were not eligible for any buses. We were walkers, and we got so much communication about what the policy was, what are the different things. We haven't got anything this year. Second thing is, so I don't have an official policy on why, you know, what sort of criteria gives you busing. Number two, I don't know if this policy contains Google Maps as a criteria to measure your walking distance. I have three or actually five other maps here. Anybody's feel free can take a look. They all show 2 miles as walking distance, which makes us eligible, except Google Maps. And it's just weird. There's visual representation on the guy who lives ahead of us, gets the bus. We don't. And it's just the structure of how we're a leaflet sort of, you know, organized, right? Because it's a township, it's a townhouse community. So that's number two. I want to know if really Google Maps is one that has been adhered to, and there are five other Bing, Apple, Waze, MapQuest, and they're all ignored, because they all say 2 miles. And I've been, you know, trying to appeal about this many times, but I haven't gotten anywhere. The second thing is, I read about, somewhere about NJ Department of Transportation's policy about safety and hazardous condition. And yes, you know, you could say there is no payment to walk for a student. It's may, it's debatable whether it's hazardous or not, but we have to negotiate a rail crossing, which is a corner rail crossing, and there are trains that come through that time, and there is no way to cross that without any parental guidance. So that should have been considered, but I don't know if, you know, the policy, and I think there is some discretion. So I just wanted to know if officially our unit is sort of denied that provision that we're not part of the hazardous route policy. So those are the two basic points. It's just, you put our house in the center, and the last comment I want to make is, you put our house in the center, you take a roundabout direction, every single kid has a free bus except us. And this is a technicality that I've been trying to fight. I don't, I don't want to make this a big deal, but just for my son sitting there, I want to make sure, like, this is a process you follow when you have to go, you know, you know, fight something. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Toder. Thank you, sir. So before you leave this evening, just make sure that you touch base with Dr. Huss in the back. He's going to raise his hand right now with all of your information in relationship to that, just so that we can look at it ourselves, touch base with transportation. We utilize internal software also?
We don't utilize any of these softwares that are just readily available free.
Well, we can, we can provide you with the software that we utilize through our transportation department as to how criteria is measured. And again, I'm not sure of the circumstance, and I have to get, I know the, I know the area and the unit, but we'd have to see exactly where your house is at that timeframe. But one of the things I can assure you is that if I'm wrong or we're wrong, we'll correct it. Does that sound good? And I think the, you know, listen, again, the model that you're setting for your son and advocating for him is something that we should all aspire to as parents, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, no talking in the public, please. Next, for public comments, Deepa Patel.
This is my first, like, Board of Education meeting.
Sure. Name and address.
Yeah. My name is Deepa Patel, and 92 Ethel Road.
My name is Rajni Khant.
One, one public comment. You get, you could do your own. She has to go, and then you can go.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I am the mother of three elementary kids, students, and I'm here today to reach out to Mr. Alderelli. Congratulations, first of all, for your contract. Last year, we are trying to reach out to the transportation department. Whole year, me and my neighbors, like, they are very rude, and I'm just here today. We need a stop for, close to our house. Right now, they gave us a stop, which is .3 miles away from our house. And it's very hard for the elementary students, like kindergartners and the third, fourth graders, to walk all the way there. We have to drop our kids to the car. And I don't know how to reach you out. Last year, I emailed you many times, me and my neighbors, and we came to the transportation department, we came to the Board of Education building, but it's very hard to reach you out. So we need, like, your appointment time, so me and my neighbors will come to you and explain our problem.
Thank you so much, Dr. Toder. If Dr. Huss wants to take this and visit the place.
Just a quick comment about stops. So listen, we do, and I understand that, you know...
Yeah, because we had that stop since last 10 years, and they eliminated the stop. The bus was waiting outside our stop for around...
Understood, understood, understood. Rather than get into a back and forth right here, if you can touch base with Dr. Huss, we'll definitely look at your stop. I can't make any promises in relationship to changing it. I will tell you that.
My question is, like, they have a bus stop for them.
If I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, we'll fix it.
Okay.
Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Dr. Huss is the one sitting in the corner. Next, Taryendra.
This is again, Taryendra Lakhanda, 102 Evergreen Road, Edison. Five months before exactly, I followed this same question about STEM Academy criteria for admission, and I went back and forth with Mr. President and Mr. Cohen. I've been told that there is no curriculum meeting happened till now, and that's why the placement is critical hold. I would let you know that right now, 900 students in 8th grade who's taking Algebra 1, Math Prime, or Math 8, waiting for the decision, that will they be eligible to apply, to apply for the STEM Academy? Why not? We are taking decisions. We are not asking the argument of admission. We'd apply for admission if they are good in the math skill, let them make it eligible. If don't, that's okay. But at least give them chance to run for this. I don't know how many of board members knows about that. To go enjoyment in 8th grade, they have to pre-algebra in 6th grade, Algebra 1 in 7th grade, and then only they qualify in geometry. And a lot of students coming from other countries, other districts, they all input in Math Prime in 6th grade, which could never reach to geometry at 8th grade. So you putting all the incoming students from other cities, other countries, other places, Math Prime, and then making them, oh, even they have good skill in math, they never reach to geometry. There are several Hispanic and African Americans, and they are considered weak statistically in math. They are also not eligible for this STEM Academy. Are we, have inclusive environment? No. I agree. Mr. President, you said that we can have more STEM Academy or more STEM curriculum, but at this moment, at least make those students who are waiting to, at least eligible to apply. I mean, don't select them, but let them eligible to apply for the STEM Academy and give them better options to education. Second thing, Woodbridge Magnet School, the one student, bright student, they have, they don't have this policy. They said, "Okay, let's take SM exams," and who are qualified is fine. They don't have requirement geometry, which is much higher level event school. A lot of students from that school goes to Ivy Leagues. So if the higher level schools have that criteria, why we are, we putting that? That school doesn't get our money also. We, of course, the taxes goes, but our, most of taxes goes to the STEM Academy. My tax, everybody, 7% money goes to the STEM Academy. So why we not allowing our students to at least compete? Whether select, difference doesn't story. Okay? So thank you for listening, and I hope to hear from that very quick and in this criteria. Appreciate.
Thank you. Dr. Toder, you want to make a comment?
I think, I think.
All right, thank you. Next, Beth.
Beth Talke, 15 Midwood Avenue. Congratulations, Dr. Alderelli. Just means another year, you're going to have to listen to me up at the mic. First thing is, I do appreciate you putting the holidays on the Google Calendar, but it would be more inclusive if it was on the official Edison School Calendar. And being that we tend to make a lot of motions lately, Mr. President, on the board up there, I think a revision to our calendar currently would be a good way to go, being that we discussed this back in the spring, even before the calendar was adopted, and we've had revisions. Perhaps we can do it so it's official. Also, I'm just a little bit confused, because last month, we were told none of our questions would be answered through our attorney, and they weren't. And we were told that they were going to be put on the website. I'm just curious, Mr. President, where exactly on the website are the responses for our questions, or where will they be? Because there was none from last month, and they're supposed to be, you know, coming up for this month. I know it's still a work in progress, but where are our answers? I hope you can just answer that, so that the people at home can find the answers on the website. I know there's not supposed to be any back and forth.
Dr. Toder, go ahead.
Beautiful. So Ms. Daniels putting a spot on the website to answer these questions as of right now that we've got listed. Comments, I mean, some of them are comments also, so we're trying to capture them the best that we can.
Okay. I appreciate, and I really appreciate back and forth tonight that you do respond to the audience, because I think us as stakeholders and taxpayers should be part of the process, and our answers should be, you know, responded to, because people at home are watching this live. And as Ms. White said earlier, I also do agree that we should go back to have our caucus meetings, because maybe there wouldn't be so much discontent up on the board on certain very important matters, and there could be more insight into it and more time. And also, that way, the public, because this time, it seems we got the board agenda in the right timeframe. The last couple of months, we haven't. And I know there's always last minute revisions and stuff, but, you know, we're not informed. I'm not sure how quick the board members are getting it, that you can have proper discussions and in-depth discussions on what's going on, rather than just coming and just voting for it without seeing everything. Thank you, and I appreciate all your time that you guys put into this.
No, thank you so much. So since you mentioned about the motion, I'll do a motion this time around, which I have been, you know, seeing it from all the sides, to add, to revise the district calendar on the website, having Christmas and Good Friday. How about that? Who wants to second that motion? Any, any second of that motion?
I'll second that.
Yes, Mr. Lugo, second. Thank you. Let's take a roll call, Mr. Toder.
So I have a motion by Mr. Patel. Second by Mr. Lugo. And then, which holidays? Christmas, New Year's?
Making the change on the calendar on the website, district website, right? Ms. Talke and Ms. Radler, to include Christmas and Good Friday.
Christmas and Good Friday.
Right, okay. All right. So that's the motion.
Official, okay, got it. Official calendar. Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Aver.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Right? Thank you. All right. Next, for public comments. Mr. Shi.
100%. You got to take those little victories.
Jerry, you want to let him go first? Bijal, you can go. Do you want a motion further from here?
All right. This is Bijal from Melbourne Lane. I'm here to file a complaint of targeted harassment against the transportation department and Dr. Huss. Okay? On August 30th, I sent an email to Dr. Alderelli, asking him why Melbourne Lane not eligible for the school bus. And because from the last two years, you know, we got the school, we got the free school bus, and then, you know, a year after that, we started getting the emails saying, like, oh, you know, you need to subscribe. And then later on, like, you know, we decided, like, okay, it's a free bus. Then this year, district started sending an email to us, saying, like, you need to pay. We didn't pay, actually. We didn't fill out the form, we didn't pay, actually, because every year, you know, they send us an email, and, you know, later on, they decide, like, okay, no, it's a free bus. So last year, I made a payment, but the bus was free, actually. I didn't get the refund. I've been still waiting for my refund. It's almost one year now. Okay? And so I need my refund now. Up until now, I was thinking, like, okay, no, just donation. I forget it, I never asked, but now I need a refund, actually. Okay? So on Tuesday, so on 30th, when I sent him an email, like, you know, we need a fee, why Melbourne Lane is not eligible for the free bus. On Tuesday, you know, Dr. Huss replied, and he just made a verdict. He said, like, okay, no, we follow the district policy, according to our policy, you know, Melbourne Lane is not eligible for the school bus, and the case is concluded. That's it. Okay? First email, he made a decision. Okay? And so on Wednesday morning, I replied. I asked him, like, okay, no, how did you make a decision? Who made a decision? Until last year, Dr. Alderelli, he used to come, he used to go in community by community, and then he used to make a decision. So how did you make a decision and just conclude my case, actually? Okay? And so then, you know, I didn't hear, so Wednesday morning, I said, I'm sorry, Wednesday afternoon, I decided to go school district. Okay? I went there, and I said, like, I would like to meet, or I would like to speak with someone about the transportation issue. And the front desk person, okay, and I explained the case. She's like, I have no idea. I said, that's why I'm telling you, okay, speak with someone, or, you know, give me the appointment, so I can speak with someone, actually. I said, like, you know, Don Welch, she knows my case. So I said, give me the appointment with Don Welch, or give me the appointment with Dr. Alderelli, or, you know, someone who knows my case, actually. So she kept going back and forth, back and forth, four or five times, actually. And that, that Don Welch, she was watching me. I'm standing there and explaining my case and wasting my time. 45 minutes, I was there. Okay? And after that, I said, okay, no, it's nothing going to happen, and I left. After that, I sent email of that walkway. Okay? That walkway has, like, you know, both end, it's a wooden barrier gate, actually. Okay? And so when I sent him an email on Wednesday afternoon, he said, like, yeah, okay, no, see, this walkway is clean, you know, you should be able to walk. So I sent an email again on Thursday. I asked him, like, okay, no, what about the wintertime? Thursday morning, when the bus came, okay, I asked the bus driver, can this kid go in the bus and do her space? She said, like, yeah, you know, we have space in the bus. I can take you today, but then I have to speak with my supervisor later today. I said, that's fine. So on that day, she was taking, she took the kid in the bus. But later in the afternoon, somehow, something got changed. But later in the afternoon, somehow something got changed. My email, they got ticked off actually. So then, my daughter become a criminal and she became a wanted. And three o'clock, when they, when they, when they were coming back, when this kid started entering onto the bus. The driver, bus driver, she was asking, who is this person actually? Okay. She was asking each and every kid. And then, you know, like, when my daughter say like, I'm the person, she said like, okay, she said like, okay, from tomorrow, you won't be riding in the bus. I won't be able to take you. Okay. And my daughter came home with a teary eye, okay. And I told her, I asked her what happened. And she's like, no, from, because of you, you know, you are taking the, you know, leadership, so I cannot go in a bus tomorrow. Okay. They hold my, they told me like, you cannot go. And I said like, no, no, you know, probably, you know, it's for everyone. And she's like, no, specifically they told me and this is what happened actually. And I said like, no, no, there might be some mistake. You will see, like, you know, everybody will hear. Okay. All the kids won't be able to go who didn't pay or fill out the form. And next morning, the bus came. I saw like, you know, all the kid, they were going in the bus, no question to ask, they were able to go in a bus. So I went downstairs and I asked the bus driver, I said like, can, can you take my daughter? And she's like, sorry, you guys didn't pay. I said like, you know, this other kid didn't pay either actually. Why they are able to go? So she realized the problem and she said, okay, let me talk to my supervisor. Okay. And then she, she called the supervisor and she, she told me again, sorry, you know, I cannot take your daughter. I said like, why? You know, like, these other kids are going, why she cannot go? Okay. And I said, I asked your supervisor, you know, when other kids are able to go, she, they didn't fill out the form, they didn't, they didn't pay the money. They are able to go, why only she cannot go? So she told again, like, sorry, you know, my supervisor said she cannot go. Okay. And I cannot do anything. I said, okay, you can, you can go. And then I said, okay, who was the supervisor? And I said, she said like, okay, no, she gave me her card. The card was Don Welch. Okay. And I realized the entire situation.
Your six minutes are over.
My case is longer, so give me who was.
So, sorry, but we have to have the rules same for everyone. Thank you. And you are, you can, I know you spoke with Dr. Alderelli and.
No, I don't want to talk personally. I want to explain. I need the recording.
Right. So I understand, but we have the rules same for everyone?
I see. That's it.
Yeah, that's fine. No, you can't.
No, sir.
No. Sir, Mr. President, call the next person, please.
Yes, next. So the rules are six minutes for everyone for public comments in general. So, Mr. She.
Excuse me, sir, please. Sir, you're out of order. Sir, please. Please.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be happy to have Tony speak with you afterwards. And Dr. Alderelli as well. Let's move on.
This is an easy questions. I hope I don't have to get a ticket from Dr. Hus. So this is about the finance report. In there, there's a mobile lease transportation break, you know, transport, transportation break room. I know we need transportation break room. So my question is, we have two trailers in Marshall. One is being used, the other one is not being used, right? So can we use the one that's not being used in Marshall? The other question is, next slide, furniture for JP Stevens and Guji Wilson. Are these the furniture for the new classroom or this is for existing classrooms upgrades and stuff? So my third question is, when I'm looking at the meeting summary for the Curriculum Committee, Bureau was the only board member in attendance. So what happened to all the other three board members? Easy questions. The other things that I just want to follow up with what I, a comment about Dr. Alderelli's contract. Dr. Alderelli, and congratulations for got a one-year extension. And this is more about the process. It's just the same with the policy 57, 56. And Brian is holding the information without releasing to all the board members. And we know it's an important issue. And if you have a legal opinion from the attorney, you can share with the board member. You don't have to share with the public. It's the same thing with Dr. Alderelli's contract. I don't think there was any discussion that happened before the motion on the floor. And I don't think Mr., you know, Board President or Vice President was aware it's coming up. And I don't think Dr. Alderelli himself knows it's coming up. So when you talk about transparency, there is none. Just another comment, this new board doc, really bad. Okay. It's not user friendly. It's really horrible. Today I tried to download the content, I couldn't even download it. The way you want to look at it, you gotta click whatever 50 things before you can actually see the content. So if you can consider replacing board docs, that'd be great. And I thought the other software was bad and this one's even worse. Okay. So that's it. I might come back because I still have three minutes and 37 seconds, if I remember something.
Right. So the board docs, I'm not going to do or encourage any motion to remove board docs, that's going to stay. But Heather Daniel had put PDF on the district calendar, on the website. So everyone can go and download the PDF as well. So that's there now. Next for public comments. Ajay.
Good evening. My name is Ajay. I'm at Five Reader Road, Edison. I, you know, first I want to wish all a very good evening and, you know, giving me time to speak about, you know, some of the thoughts that we have. And again, my voice is not my voice. It is, you know, the voice of the parents. First and foremost, I wanted to talk on the, you know, busing application I've been chasing for last six to eight months. I was told that the busing application is live and I should reach out to the Transportation Department. It's a basic courtesy which I feel is should be on the Transportation Department if an application such as a bus application is available, you know, for the students. So we've been, I have been personally chasing, right, through emails. Most of the members on the, you know, stand here were copied. I think I started last September, went till October. I was told it will come on in December, then November, then February, March. I again chased, you know, six months later, still the same. I still don't know where the busing applications stand. So do we have a date? Do we have a timeline, a firm timeline this time, so that, you know, everybody is aware of it? The winter is around the corner, right? There are bus delays going to happen, right? You want to remove that uncertainty. So I appreciate if, you know, you can give a direction and a firm date for this one. That's one. Now, in terms of the, you know, other thoughts that I had was is that I think in one of the last board meeting that I attended, right, I was told that, you know, the voice of the actual beneficiaries, which is the kids, right, the parents, right? Is there a forum other than this, right? Again, I'm bold enough to come here and speak. Not everybody is, right? So is there a, you know, medium or a way where, you know, you can hear the common voice of the parents and the students who are the prime beneficiaries, right? A few people coming here, you know, you try to address it, well and good, right? But there is a larger problem to solve. How are we attacking that? How are we ensuring that the voice of each of the, you know, a child that is actually going to study in Edison School District, the child of, the voice of their parents, right, is being heard, is being addressed, and is being, you know, followed as part of, you know, the basic agenda that we carry out, you know, as part of the board meetings? Outside of that, I also wanted to bring, you know, attention is that, does any of you or any of us sitting here feel that the Edison students are not stressed, especially when they are in high school? If the answer is no, then I am surprised. If the answer is yes, then what are we doing, right, to ensure that we take out the stress and in, you know, in a sense impart them the education that they're looking for stress free? I mean, there is an amount of stress that, you know, is kind of, you know, existing, right, within the students. Fair point, right? But I don't feel that, you know, the stress level that a high school kid, you know, that they are taking right now is, you know, explainable, right? I mean, I feel that, you know, college, college-going students are much more relieved as compared to the high school students, right? This is the time of their year that they need to enjoy, right? I want to see actionable, you know, stance. I, when I say I, right, it is the voice of the parents, as I said, right? Want to see some actionable, you know, stance is being done to reduce the stress level of the kids, right? Also bring some, you know, parity. I have a couple of more minutes. I wanted to, you know, dwell on some specific topics as well. I wanted to ensure that, you know, there is no parity between, let's say, different classes in terms of the teaching and the grading, right? A teacher, right, let's say I'm, I'm a teacher, you know, teaching geometry, right? There's another ABC teacher teaching geometry in the same grade, right? The way I grade, the way she or he grades, right, is very different. How do we bring out that parity or the normalization so that every kid, right, within that whole grade has the same level of normalization, right? I might, I might be very lenient and give, you know, a good scoring grade. The other colleague of mine might not. How are we ensuring that that parity exists and, you know, one benefits the other doesn't, you know, is resolved? The other thing I've been hearing the complaints from many of the parents is that the teachers, right, they're doing their job, no doubt about it. You know, no doubt about it in terms of their job and all. But I feel that they need to take that extra mile to teach the student, right? Especially for the ones which are in honor grades, right? The honor grade kids are, you know, being left alone in terms of, you know, not teaching a topic which is of very relevant or which has some level of hardness or, you know, stiffness in it. I feel very strongly that the teachers should have a right pedagogy of teaching those rather than just giving cell studies. If that is the only intent, right, if cell study is the only intent for the honors role, then, you know, call it out. And, you know, make it evident to the students that, okay, you know what your expectation is that sit in the class, right? You'll get some notes, study those notes, prepare for the quiz, come for the quiz prepared and, you know, get it done. If that is not the intent, then, you know, really you should look at the pedagogy of teaching, right, and imparting the concepts very clearly to the students. Thank you. Thanks again for listening to my comments.
Right, thank you. Oh, Dr. Alderelli, yes.
Perfect. So just to go back, I know Mr. She had questions in relationship to the Marshall trailers. We did have our architects look at those. Unfortunately, they really weren't salvageable. We had, we had to retire both of those. I think the second question was in relationship to classroom furniture, but I will go back and look at the tape and provide you with a more cohesive answer. But my understanding is you were looking at classroom, those are for the JP office as well as classrooms.
Mr. She, I'll call in the second timers, first timers. Yes. Any first timers? Yes, sir.
This is Abhijit Dabhaday from 407 Edison 08817. This is again regarding admission to the STEM. This is just an appeal to the board that to change the process and make more inclusive of all the students. Because we are making a decision in like kind of elementary's last grade or middle school somewhere. But students are something like they, they work hard and they want to get, so if there is some kind of exam or a test based on some criteria to get into the STEM, that would be really great. That's the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments on STEM, yourself and Tarendra. And, you know, we have a lot of faith in Mr. Ikohan and, you know, to lay out a plan together and Dr. Alderelli. And we very much respect their opinion on all the curriculum items. I'm sure whatever process works out in next upcoming months will be the right process and it will benefit the students. Thank you. Any other?
One more, one more piece too. I just want to touch base on some of the points we made tonight. So in the beginning, I did announce subscription applications will be available on October 1st, which tomorrow. So if you're eligible, it'll, it'll be, it'll be, it'll pop up in your, in the portal at that time. As far as student, student and parent voice, yeah, we've actually started an initiative in which we surveyed through thought exchange. We also did it with staff too. We want to know what you think. We want to give, we want to do periodic check-ins as to some of the things that we're doing really well and areas that we can improve upon too and make those actionable. But the other component is all of the things that you referenced in regards to student stress is, is part of our strategic plan in student wellness, right? And what are the external factors and what are the internal factors that, that, that stress our students out from all grade levels, right? And stress manifests itself very differently in kindergarten than it does in 12th grade. And, and the other component to that, and the research will show, is in order to address student stress, you have to address teacher stress and burnout in that capacity too. Because, because happy staff rooms equal happy classrooms. It's, it's a research-based component. So by focusing our energy to making sure our teachers are in an environment where they can thrive, where they can work on problems that affect the organization and that, when they, when they have autonomy, but also provide parity. And I do understand what you're talking about in, in order to level the playing field. The type of education you get in one class is the same in another class. We, we, we do, we, I, I do understand what you're saying in relationship to that. But all of that is part of our actionable part with the strategic plan. So when those surveys do come out, I would encourage you and the members of your community, please participate in them. They do, they are not sitting on a shelf. We make them part of our action plan and I will report out to this board about those pieces. You have my word.
Thank you so much, Dr. Alderelli. And one second, Mr. She. One second. So Dr. Alderelli, as he said, the thought exchange, right? So what a wonderful tool this year. It was deployed by Ms. Heather Daniel. And we had used it collectively to seek feedback on the webinars and for the survey and everything. So it's on the website, right?
Yeah.
Everyone is encouraged to do that. There is also, I was not going to bring this up, I forgot, but now I'm very much compelled before the end of this month's board meeting to bring this up. There's also chain of communication on the district website. It lists every single majority of the items, whom to reach out to and where to go to. Especially the transportation and all other, like superintendent is highest in the chain of communication. And before even you reach out to superintendent, there is several steps you can follow. Because I get so many messages, I'm not going to bore anyone here or in public to read some of those. But for those who didn't get a chance to be in the open house, how do we reset the locker code? Is that a message for a board president or a board of ad member? Hi, what kind of binders do we need? Binders with divider. Is it from different subjects? Is it a message for a board president or a board member? When is the back-to-school night for sixth graders? When your principal or your teachers email you, you have their email address and all the information. And very well, I'm pretty sure any single staff member and principal will be very happy to respond to your questions. Do you have any idea how do we drop off third graders or will, will they no need to go to the blacktop? Did they send any info? I didn't find anything in the weekly warm-up. Oh, I'm pretty sure all the principals here are very happy to answer such questions. And that's their job to do that. How do we know if our kid is medically cleared for athletics? Like seriously? You're going to message us and ask that question? Well, that is, that's why we put the chain of communication. So, you know, I encourage everyone to follow. And the last one, seriously, you can go all night long. Hi, Birin. I'm being spelled as B-I-R-N. I got your number from, I'm not going to disclose that person's name. We moved to Edison last week and applied for my daughter. She has not got admission yet. Can you enroll her ASAP as she is crying a lot every day and we are very upset? She has applied for first grade in, I'm not going to disclose the name of the school. So this is what we deal with, right? I don't know what other board members are getting. But this is just a tip of the iceberg that I have been getting from people. And, you know, so there is a chain of communication. The reason I was compelled to share it is if someone hears, sees this board meeting and hears these messages, probably they will understand that, listen, go to the website, take two minutes, go to the thought exchange, go to all the sections. And there is a whole lot of information over there. Because as Mr. Romano always says, the board's responsibility is to hire the superintendent and see that the district is run well. And then there is a whole chain of communication to follow, right? So hopefully, I'll keep reiterating this, hopefully everyone follows that. Thank you. Next for Vishal, Mr. Vishal.
So I was gonna say, you know, thank you. That feedback survey form was great. I did not know that it's on a website as well. So is it on a website for permanently for anybody to go and give a feedback?
Currently, right now, until we stop it and reassess, and then we will follow up on the topics that are hot and probably generate new questions in relationship to how we can improve, not only as a community, but.
Again, I'm gonna just give another idea. Can we just put out something, just like, give us feedback, open free-form texts? Of course, you want to collect who is giving you the feedback. Because, you know, unauthenticated feedback is almost useless. Because you don't want to know who is doing it. But it's like a free form where people can give you or give, you know, administration ideas and suggestions on any topic.
And I want to say there's, the last two boxes do provide that through thought exchange as well too. But I'll confirm that with Ms. Daniel.
Well, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you. Next, Mr. Ross.
Good evening. Before I jump into my normal ebullient, what's great about Edison High spiel, I just want to say that seriously, I share many of the concerns of the ETA President Matt Revnik when it comes to the abolition of that policy. It's the, we keep hearing about the NJLAD. It's the, we keep hearing about the NJ LAD, you know, when we spell out those initials, it kind of fills where the, the conversation should go. It's a New Jersey law that set these things in motion, so that's a little further down Route One, it's Trenton, people have to make sure that they're, again, following the chain of command as our, our board president says, they need to talk to their elected representatives down in Trenton and they need to talk to people who pass laws if they have issues and not necessarily have it come here. And the LAD part is law against discrimination. And I hope that when we remove policies, you know, and I know that, that teacher, student, parent triangle, when that works best, that's when people learn. But we need to make sure that we're helping our most vulnerable students and we're keeping them safe. Whether it's our LGBTQ students, whether it's students who've just transferred into the district, whether it's students who are socially, economically disadvantaged, we have to make sure that we're always making this a safe district for them and we're not just making some moves on that. But I just wanted to say that. Also want to thank JP Stevens for hosting the band show that we hosted for them and they won their, some of the best awards here, they hosted for us and we won a lot of the awards there. It's great to see the schools coming together and I look forward to working with the new administration. But it is coming up on spooky season, everybody, so don't get scared, we're gonna, maybe we'll have two meetings or one meeting, but either way, it's, it won't be that scary and it's not going to be as scary as we have the Addams Family play which is coming on here on October twenty-sixth and October twenty-seventh. We've got two shows on Saturday the twenty-seventh, it's absolutely wonderful, it's family-friendly, you can bring everyone out, we love to see you. If you use the code EAGLESFLY when you get to the door, they'll give you the ticket for ten dollars, it's something that I want everybody to do. I also have to thank Dr. D'Arlely, Dr. Huss, the Board of Education, we've had a great opening at Edison High this year. We've taken a lot of steps to try to take back the bathrooms, to steal some words from Dr. Kim, and I know she's doing likewise at JP Stevens, but that's due in part to the commitment from the board and from the administration in giving us the people necessary to make sure that we can keep our kids safe, make sure they have access to the bathrooms when they need it and make sure that they've got the proper environment to learn. And in terms of learning, I know that, you know, I'm so, you know, glad that we're a victim of our success at the STEM Academy that started back when we built the Scanlon Wing in twenty-twelve is, has grown so much, there's so many people want to get in it, but I think everyone has to recognize there's many paths to greatness and we have students that go to Carnegie Mellon or UPenn or U Michigan that aren't a part of the STEM Academy. And every student in Edison has that opportunity to grow and get to the most rigorous possible curriculum and as New Jersey's got some of the best education in the state, I know the ETEA and NJEA is always talking about that, Edison has some of the best education in the entire state of New Jersey and our kids go out and do wonderful things no matter what it is. And anybody that's sending their child to Edison High and has concerns about their academic path, there's always time over the summer before they get here to give me a call. So I appreciate everybody. We've got football coming up on the, let's see, on the fourth and Lashana Tovar, to everyone who's celebrating the new year this week, thank you.
Thank you, I thought the code gets us free entry, but that's okay.
You had to do it.
It's only, it's only if you say the second part of the code that you get in for free.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you, Mr. Ross. Any other public comments? Yes, Ms. Madhavatra.
Oh, okay.
Dimple Mohotra, four sixty-one, girl of Alabama here. Good evening, everybody, good evening, Mr. President, Dr. D'Arlely.
Still may want to take the mic.
All right.
Lower it a little.
I am Dimple Mohotra and I'm running for a seat on the Board of Education. And Dr. D'Arlely, congratulations on your contract.
Thank you.
Amazing. I commend you and your team for conducting such a thorough analysis and setting a new direction for our district to address the gaps that have been identified. I'm deeply passionate about our students and how, how to empower them to succeed and thrive in future, but I do have a question. As we move forward with this ambitious plans, what do you foresee the biggest challenges in achieving these goals? Additionally, this is very near and dear to me, I noticed our old slogan, nothing but excellence was changed. Has there been any change to this guiding principle or is it still the cornerstone of our vision moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madhavatra, you brought in some very good questions, I'll definitely let Dr. D'Arlely respond to that.
Yeah, great, listen, so we all, we all strive for excellence, right? But I think all the educators in the room will agree also, it's that real learning occurs when you start to make mistakes, right? And we learn from our mistakes and we, and, and that's when, that's when we get better, right? So the, the goal is always, always, the goal is always to strive for excellence, but at the same time, we also want to value that path that gets us there too, right? As far as moving forward and achieving our goals, listen, there, there's multiple obstacles that, you know, our team as well as this Board of Education will have to consider, right? First and foremost will be, you know, financial, right, and funding, right? You have to make your, your budget is a, is a, a representation of what you do, you value as an organization, right? So we have to make sure that we're allocating resources in the areas that we have to prioritize and prioritization is number two, right? We, we, or actually probably pri- number one, prioritize and then look and talk about funding. Expansion is always an issue, right? Space, you know, a lot of the things that were discussed tonight in relationship to the expansion of programs and providing more access also has to do with classroom space, right? See, you can't offer programs where you can't place kids and teachers in an environment that's conducive to learning, right? But, but listen, I, I think that we have a really good plan moving forward in relationship to our strategic plan, we have the best staff on the planet, we have really good momentum and I think our culture is such that regardless of obstacles, if we put our mind to, to what we achieve and what we value, we're going to achieve it and I'm fortunate to be a part of it.
Right, thank you. Any more public comments? Saying none, motion to end public comments.
Motion.
All in favor?
Hi.
Right, motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Vishal Patel. Any second?
Second.
Mr. Romano, all in favor?
Hi.
Right, meeting is adjourned.